Yeah, well Catherine's coming. She's right here. Right on time. Nope, it's ten o'clock Catherine. Good morning. I call this special called work session meeting of September ninth to order.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn to executive session for discussion of real estate.
Second. Any discussion seeing none, I call the question. All in favor say aye. We will be back shortly. All right. Who is Richard starting? Is that how this is working? Uh huh. Yes, sir. I don't know how that works. I don't think so. Can you give me one second for our attorney to get here? They got city manager attorney and city man. I know, but I have to have the like the parliamentary procedure person. He's missing. They're missing. Can someone text them and see where they are though? I don't understand how we lost them. Oh, okay. Okay, it's not coming. I'll just come in at what? Um, go ahead. It doesn't matter. Can you go to the microphone just for the record?
So again, Madam Mayor, thank you for this point of order. My only question is since it's a full council meeting and a public meeting, is why there is no public comments section in the agenda?
In our ordinances, special called meetings don't have public comment.
Can you refer me to those written rules?
I could, but.
I mean, not today.
Right. Yes, I'll yeah. It's in the rules of order. I'll get it to you. Yeah.
Very good.
Okay.
And I, you know, it's terrible to have a public meeting with no public comments. It's my, my objection. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, who's presenting first? Is it Richard? It's just the review. Okay. Is it up back there? No, is it on?
It should be, yes.
And has Tom been elevated to participant?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. They'll do it. Okay, go ahead. Start. Please.
Sure. So, uh. Good evening. Oh, gosh, good evening. Good morning. Mayor Council. So here to very briefly go give an overview of the 2025 proposed mayor and city manager budget operating in capital. So I will start off with some background information. So and this is mainly focused on the general fund throughout this presentation. But for the last three mayor, three years, we have budgeted a use of fund balance within the general fund, but did not use it. And we have closely, we are closely monitoring 2024. We do have a budgeted use of fund balance in 2024. But again, as we get property tax bills and things of that nature, and we'll have a better feel for it in a couple of months as to what 2024 would look like. Um, in developing this 2025 budget, we had two kind of guiding parameters, if you want to call them that. Minimize the use of fund balance within the general fund and keep the projected general fund fund balance to over six months, which is two months above the required policy of a four month minimum reserve. So those were our two guiding principles. Just to go over a calendar real quickly of what we've done and where we're at and what it looks like going forward. So we kicked off the 2025 budget process in early July and late July, departments submitted all their requests to finance. We had department review team meetings, August thirteenth and fourteenth. That review team made on the review team consisted of myself, city manager, assistant city manager and assistant finance director, where we brought in each department director and went over their requests as part of the budget. The proposed budget was published on August thirtieth. And then this is the first of two work sessions, if we want to call it that. The September sixteenth, we do have reserved as well. And then we'll have two public hearings on the budget, one on Tuesday, October fifteenth, and then the final public hearing and hopefully adoption will be on Monday, October twenty eighth. So I wanted to go through some assumptions or stuff or items that are included in the 2025 budget. So within the 2025 budget, we have modest revenue growth of about 2.4%. We have proposed a 4.9% pay increase. That's effective July first of 2025, so six months of a 4.9% pay increase. We also included the full year of funding for the pay raises that took effect this year. We gave out a pay raise May thirtieth, I believe is effective May thirtieth of this year. So that pay raise is fully funded for next year. We have a six and a half percent health insurance increase that is included in this budget. And then we're also fully funding the additional staff that were approved this year. So the four police positions that were approved to the new special investigations unit. We have one more year. So 2024 was funded with ARPA two and 2025 as well with was funded for ARPA two with those positions. Same with the civilian fleet manager, 2024 and 2025 are funded with ARPA two money. And then the four public safety ambassadors in this year in 2024, we're funding them with salary savings within the police department. So 2025, that is an add to the budget for those four positions.
A question, I'm sorry, on that one just before.
Yes.
Um. So the, the increase in the health insurance, the 255K. That's the difference between what we were paying in 24 and what we're paying in 25, just flat out, correct?
Correct, yes.
When you say the 420K for the public safety ambassadors, is that inclusive of benefits or exclusive?
Correct, inclusive, that is.
So is some of, is there some overlap between the 255, I mean, and the 420, just a small?
Very small for.
But there is an overlap. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Yes, so. To let you know, so we budget the benefits. So yes, we budget generally speaking, budget at midpoint plus of the third tier of so of benefits or might come in lower, might come in higher. So. Okay, I will move on to a couple of more assumptions. So for the last two years, we've had ARPA funding for two positions, one within HR and one within economic development. That funding is not available any longer. So for 2025, those two positions are funded by general fund dollars. In addition, we fully funded all of our annual municipal contract agreements and the right of way parks maintenance contract within this budget. And finally, we fully funded our two debt service for city hall and for vermic road. Both of those are funded as well. So those are some high level assumptions of what is included in the budget. What is not included in the budget is any changes to retirement. So I'm working with city management and HR. We often compare ourselves to other municipalities. We want to make sure we're offering the best possible benefits that we can. One area that we've noticed is some municipalities have gone up an additional percent in their match. We currently offer 11% and then if the city, if the employee puts in eight percent, they get an additional 4%. So municipalities have gone up an additional percent, as I said, that if we were to do that, it'd be approximately $105,000. And then we had eight personnel requests that are not included in this budget. Three police officers, three CID detectives and one PSR that has all requested as part of the Barry Dunn recommendation. And then one budget slash management analyst, there's a request of finance and kind of city management together. Our thought process with the police Barry Dunn recommendations was that as they're fully staffed, once they're fully staffed, they still have some vacancies right now, but they are working them down. Once they're fully staffed, we will bring to you necessary funding for these positions. So, but at this time, we want them to address the current vacancies and then we'll work on those positions once they're fully staffed. And I put a note on there that we're, we will continue to evaluate converting contract positions to city positions as it financially makes sense and as the timing makes sense. So those are a couple of things that were not included in the budget. I want to talk about how we handled enhancement requests this year. So we did a little bit different. We we being finance gave the departments their personnel budget, basically factored in all the healthcare increases and salary increases and anything like that. What we did is any non-personnel related costs, we asked departments to turn in whatever their 2024 budget was to turn that same number in for 2025 and then note any increases in three categories, either same level of service, meaning they need those funds to maintain the same level of service they're giving today. They need those same dollars to be able to give that same level of service in 2025. What's one time request, one time project, one time special initiative maybe? And then what's enhancements truly above and beyond, for lack of a better word, your base budget. So we had them submitted in three buckets. For the general funds, focusing on the general fund, we received total enhancement requests of $2.76 million. Included in the budget is almost $1.3 million of those requests and not included in the budget is almost $1.5 million of those requests. And we'll walk through some of those here. The first one is the same level of service request. They were $898,100 in requests and all of them are included in the budget. So there's really may four main departments that that impacted. Facilities for about $150,000, we continue to see an increase in maintenance costs, particularly for this facility and the annex, among other ones, as well as utility costs, for example, Georgia power costs continue to go up and things of that nature. For parks, about $282,000 and that really is tied to the increase in their staffing contract as well as the increase in the maintenance con parks maintenance contract. There's escalation clauses in those contracts each year. For police, it was about $246,000 in the majority, not all, but the majority of it was related to flock contracts that were previously funded by Sploost and ARPA two. So when we purchase or enter into agreement for the flock cameras, for example, we, we normally charge the, the purchase of them plus the first year of maintenance to a Sploost account, for example, capital account. However, once we are on a true maintenance agreement and we are just paying to maintain those cameras, that's when it really does roll into the operating fund. So that's why you see that request there for police. And finally, public works is very similar to parks. They're, they have a staffing contract increase as well as their right of way maintenance contract. And then they're also seeing utility cost impact as well. So those are the four major departments for the same level of service. And again, all of those requests are included in the budget that will then the proposed budget. Moving on to the expanded service level request, so we received $787,000 in expanded service level requests. Fifty four thousand, seven hundred and forty of them are included in this budget and 732,310 of those requests are not included in the budget. So what's included in this budget is a community development for $5,000, just an increase in the front yard tree and the household waste event cost that we're seeing. Human resources, we put in $5,500 for EAP specific for law enforcement officers. Information technology, $6,000 for the vendor security risk management. And that does, that would replace a full time, I'm sorry, a part time contract staffing. So there is some benefit to doing that. Parks is $20,000 for an upgrade to civic rec. They have been looking at ways to make civic rec more user friendly and things of that nature. And they've, we've identified some software that we really believe will be beneficial, not only to the citizens, but internally to staff as well. And finally, for police, $18,240, there's a contract medical server director services piece of that that would allow for EMS certification as we get underneath that contract. The FOP criminal, civil criminal legal defense fund participation and immobile vice investigative tool. So that's what was included in the 2025 budget for the expanded service level. And finally, for the one time request, so we had $955,000 of one time requests. Two hundred and thirteen are included in the budget and 742,500 are not included in the budget. What's included is the $200,000 for the comp plan and code rewrite. So we previously budgeted 500,000 in 2024 for that project and 250 was planned to be budgeted in 2025. Based on the timing of cash flow and when the award of the, of the contract was and everything, we actually think we'll spend about 250,000 in 2024 related to that contract and then 500,000 is what the budget will be in 2025. So 750,000 in total and it covers any, covers the full contract plus any add-ons or anything like that. And the other thing that we included was a 13,000 for a biannual salary survey. We like to try to complete a survey, a salary survey every other year to have a point of comparison, basically. So before I get into the numbers, I have two more slides and I want to talk about headcount real quickly. The 2024 budget included a total of 115 city positions noted there by department and the total number of staff, obviously 78 of them being police is our largest staffing function. Adding in the positions that are noted below, so we converted four IT positions to city positions this year as well as the previous positions we talked about with the special investigation of unit, public safety ambassadors and the civilian fleet manager. The 2025 budget includes a total of 128 positions, which is a change of 13 positions, again, as highlighted below.
Richard, quick question.
Sure.
Um, when you said the 24 budget, you're saying the budget, when we passed it, not the budget at the end of the year, which was all modified because we actually added those people in 24.
Correct.
So we're not adding any new bodies in 25.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we understand that we're talking past versus future. Thank you.
That 2024 budget is the adopted budget amount. You are correct. Yes.
And also the IT positions were pretty much a wash financially, correct? Thank you.
Correct. Yes, yes, correct. One more slide on headcount, just to, to kind of set the stage for, yes, we have 128 city employees covered within this budget. But to let you know, the contract, the, the staffing contracts that we have as well. There's 67 total there with 30 of those being related to the parks and right away maintenance contract. So and then that's the breakdown of the contract positions that we have within the 2025 budget. So when you add them both together, total staffing is on a FTE full time equivalent basis, if you want to call it, is about 195 employees. Just again, a point of reference to let you know what is included from a headcount perspective in the 2025 budget. So that's everything for background and now I'll get into some numbers. So for 2024, again, this is focusing on the general fund, the main operating fund of the city. For 2024 is the budget, we started with unassigned fund balance. So this was January one, 2024, fund balance of $26.4 million. So 2024 revenue is 32.9 in recurring revenue and one time revenue of a million dollars. That is back to the transfer in from ARPA two to fund the police positions that we talked about earlier. So total revenues for 2024 is budgeted to be almost $34 million. Recurring expenditures are 33, well, almost $34 million and one time expenditures are $700,000 in this budget. So total expenditures are $34.7 million. So the budgeted use of fund balance within the general fund for this year is $734,695. Assuming that holds, we will finish the year with 25.6, 25.7 million dollars in unassigned fund balance within the general fund. Months unassigned would be approximately nine months. And just to give some points of reference below. So the fund balance above the four months reserve, so the four month reserve would be 11.3 million dollars. We'd have 25.7. So the fund balance above a four month reserve would be 14.4 million dollars. And the fund balance above six months would be 8.7 million dollars at the end of this year. Flipping over to what's in the 2025 proposed budget, again, we, we would start the year with that 25.7 million dollars unassigned fund balance amount. Recurring revenue grows at approximately 2.4%. So that goes to 33.7 million dollars. And we'd also have one time revenue and I'll get to that in a second is a transfer in of $2 million from ARPA two. Again, I will talk about that on the revenue slide. So that gives total revenues in 2025 of 35.7 million dollars. Recurring expenditures in this budget is 20, I'm sorry, 36.3 million dollars with 720,000 in one time expenditures. So total expenditures of 37 million dollars. So this budget would use 1,262,213 of fund balance this year. That would leave us at approximately eight months unassigned fund balance. And again, to give you those reference points again, so the four month reserve would be almost 12.1 million dollars. So the fund balance above the four month reserve would be 12.35 million dollars. And the fund balance above six months would be 6.3 million dollars. So similar to last year, what, what we're seeing is a revenue growth on here, recurring revenue growth is 2.4% year over year from 2024 to 2025. Well, and that was very similar to last year, 23 to 24 was roughly two and a half to 3% as well. However, on the expenditure side, we're in this one from 24 to 25 is a 6.7% increase in recurring expenditures. And that was very similar to this last year from 23 to 24, when we did the 24 budget was about a seven and a half to 8% increase. So the trend is continuing where expenditure growth is outpacing revenue growth. I'm gonna, in each of the following slides, we'll break out revenue and expenditures in a little bit more detail, just so you can see the full picture. I'm sorry, for general fund revenue. These are our large categories that we really track. There's a lot of detail that builds up to these, but these are our large categories that we track from a revenue perspective. 2023 actuals is on there as a reference point as well as 2024. Again. And then the comparison out to the right, the variance and the percent change is 2024 to 2025. So most of all revenue sources are increasing somewhere between one and 10% from 2024 to 2025. For example, property taxes, we've got a 3% increase factored in and the died in the. For example, property taxes, we've got a 3% increase factored in and the diet, in the net digest. Uh, that trend is, we've continued to see that slowly trickle down. It was as high as 7%, trickled down to a little bit over 5% this past year was 3.4%. And for 2025, we've got it at 3%. There's other categories, hotel motel, for example, is at 3%. We continue to see, uh, um, strong, uh, revenue from our hotel motel partners. Investment income is up 10%, where trying to take advantage of rates while they're still higher before, uh, the Fed potentially cuts interest rates. And we see some lower interest rates there. I do want to touch on the transfer in from ARPA two. So in 2024, as we talked about, those are to fund the police positions of a million dollars. In 2025, we are transferring and proposing to transfer into a little bit over $2 million. And obviously, if we transfer in from ARPA two, that means that there's some items within ARPA two that cannot be funded. To, to let everybody know, it's a recreational equity. We're zeroing out economic development. We zero out, um, grant writing and administrative assistance. We zero it out. And then the contingency, we zero out that as well. So those are the items that are impacted within ARPA two to make this transfer to, to, of $2 million in, to the general fund.
Hey, Richard, just for clarification, that hotel motel tax, that is the, um, 37.5% of the total, right?
That is correct.
Of the cities.
Yes, yes.
Got it. Thanks.
That's, there's, there's an 8% and split between us and the, uh, Discover Dunwoody. Yes. And then a portion stays within the hotel motel tax fund for tourism related.
One second, I also had a question on that. Let me just make sure I understand that. I'm looking in the budget itself, looking at the hotel fund, motel fund summary. Sentence says the resulting revenue is distributed as follows, 37.5% to the city of Dunwoody, 43% to Discover Dunwoody, and 18.75 is retained by the city. I'm just trying, trying to make sure I understand it. So what percentage are we getting? What, the city gets them?
Sure. So we get, so, uh, all 8% goes into the hotel motel fund. And then once all the tax returns are, are collected, we will divvy it out, uh, 37 and a half percent of them. It's either, I think that's right, 37 or 37 and a half percent goes to the city, uh, uh, for our support, basically the hotels within the, within the area. 43.75% goes to Discover Dunwoody to promote, uh, tourism within the, uh, city. And then the remaining part stays within the hotel motel fund, fund 275, to be used for tourism-related, um, uh,
Okay, so 1875 doesn't really go to the city. It stays in there for, for activities within the?
Hotel motel fund, yes, to support tourism.
CIP, right?
Uh, yes. So we, we have elected to use our hotel motel funds that stay within there for the, for example, the Ashford Dunwoody Phase Two path, for example. So.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. I'm going to, we're going to talk about expended general fund expenditures, two separate ways. We're going to look at it by department, but we'll also look at it by category or by line item. So first by department. And again, similar to revenue, 2023 actuals are in there as a reference point. And the variance in the percentage change are comparing the 2024 amended budget to the 2025 proposed budget. And some highlights, I really want to highlight on the right-hand side. Police is almost 40% of the total 2025 proposed budget. They are at 14.3 million dollars of the total 37 million dollars. Going a step further of the four largest departments, so police, IT, public works and parks, they make up almost 70% of the total budget. Debt service is 3.8% of the budget and then capital and one-time expenditures are 2%. So the remaining departments, once you factor out everything, is approximately 24.4% of the total budget. I'll highlight a couple of just, uh, some of the larger changes there. City clerk, the city has an election every other year, uh, next year will be an election year for the city. And so there is a hundred thousand dollars to cab puts on the, uh, election for us. So city clerk's increase is a, really a one-time related to the election. Information technology, we continue to see, as you might recall from last year, uh, a lot of the contracts escalated between seven and 10%. We're continuing to see that into 2025. So that's the, the increase there. Facilities, we talked about.
Let's go quick question on IT. So a lot, which is undefinable. I believe a significant amount of our IT goes to support the police department, correct? But that is still listed in IT, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, we have moved all of our IT costs into the IT department. Yes. Couple of highlights, we really, we talked about, uh, police, their 2024 to 2025 budgets increasing one and a half, uh, million dollars. 11.8% and that really is tied to people costs i- is the driver there. Let's see, one, a couple others, uh, economic development, there's 50,000 in funding for the Arts Commission and 35,000 in there for Create Dunwoody. So that's why, uh, in the past, Create Dunwoody for the last two years has been funded with CARES, ARPA two money. And that's, uh, has been spent. So we had to, uh, absorb the Create Dunwoody funding within the general fund this year. So. And so that, that on a high level is by department where the budget stands. And I want to show one more view of it by category. So, uh, um, again, similar to everything else, uh, 2023 actuals on there as a reference point. And the total, percent total is the total that the, each category is of the 2025 budget. The variance is comparing 24 to 25 and then the percent change. What you'll notice is the personnel and admin costs are almost 61% of the total 2025 proposed budget, 60.6%. Again, that's our people cost, for lack of a better word. Property liability, insurance and debt service is 5.8% of the total budget. And so the remaining categories are roughly 11.3 million dollars is 33.6%. So that's, that's how it breaks out on a high level and, and repairs and maintenance can be a very large category. So what we've tried to do on here is break out two of the areas that kind of roll up into repairs and maintenance. Let's see, on the fifth row down, there's parks and right-of-way maintenance that speaks for itself. And that is going up 7% this year, about two, oh, I'm sorry, six and a half percent to almost 2.4 million dollars. Like that speaks for itself. And then the other thing that we pulled out is a lot of the IT maintenance agreements as well, going up 3%. And that's roughly almost 1.1 million dollars of that repairs and maintenance total. So just trying to get a little bit more granular into repairs and maintenance, because that can be a very large category. But within there are some very significant, uh, funding amounts. And I believe that is all from a, uh, um, general fund perspective.
Go back to that one. Cause you know, we've talked about the sum, but right-of-way, parks and right-of-way maintenance is really human beings, right? Most of that expense?
Correct.
Okay. As is office and administrative services, but the reason they don't show up as personnel costs is because we're contracting those services?
Correct, yes.
Okay. If we employed those people directly, they would show up as part of, okay. Thank you.
They would show up as people costs.
Okay, thank you.
And so that was it for the general fund. I was going to have two slides, just real briefly about what's included in the capital program. Back to the hotel motel fund. So this is that 18% that stays within the hotel motel fund. This year, we're designating 943,000 for continued funding of Phase Two, the Ashford Dunwoody multi-use path. And then we're also setting aside 125,000 for trailway finding signage. Um, within Sploost One, there is definitely some good news there. So, uh, we have Sploost One ended, collections related to Sploost One ended March of 2024. And we collected approximately 47 million dollars and, uh, related to Sploost One. We have budgeted the use of 43 million dollars. So in this budget, we are putting that $4 million to work, so to speak, to where in Sploost One, revenue collections will be 47 million dollars and the budgeted expenditures will be 47 million dollars. We have split it up into 2.6 million dollars for transportation projects. And there's a list there. Most of those are funding existing projects. The last one that's a new project is the signal pole replacement, uh, hammered at Perimeter Center Parkway is a new project. All the other ones are existing projects that are, are needing additional funding to complete the projects. 1.1 million dollars to public safety. They will use it for, uh, vehicles and equipment as well as a SWAT storage building. And then 236,000 dollars to facilities, repairs and maintenance that we are hoping to use for, uh, to get, to put toward funding for air conditioning here within this, uh, city hall. So. So that's Sploost One. Sploost Two, we, um, uh, started collections in April of 2024. So 2025 will be the first full year of collections under Sploost Two. We have budgeted a little bit over $9 million in collections in Sploost Two. We're putting them in a couple of different ways, 2.7.
Nine million total or nine million annually?
Annual.
Okay, just want to be clarifying.
Yes, I'm sorry, annually for 2025, yes, annually. For, uh, transportation-related projects, we've got 2.75 million of Sploost Two funds dedicated for road resurfacing. Plus, we also budgeted additional $500,000 in LMEG, uh, grant funding for that. In there, we also have 1.8 million dollars for, uh, additional funding for the Shambly Dunwoody Bridge. And then I wanted to hit on public safety, about $700,000 for public safety for nine police, uh, replacement vehicles. So those are vehicles that have hit their useful life, basically. And, and we've got funding to, uh, um, uh, for nine addition, not additional replacement vehicles. And then 425,000 for police equipment. And then finally, for the general capital project fund, we've got two, uh, sources, two items that we're funding there, 225 for IT needs. New laptops and desktops. We try to budget about a hundred thousand dollars each year as technology continues to evolve and change. We want to make sure that we have funding set aside to replace desktops and laptops as well as new hosts and sands. We try to do that, generally speaking, every other year, um, uh, for funding there. That's about 120,000 this year. And then $600,000 in the general capital repair and improvements for parks and facilities. Uh, that was set aside as part of the Shalaford proceeds, $600,000 a year for five years. This would be the third year, if you want to call it that, of, uh, 2025 would be the third year of it. So we would have a 1.8 million available, 600,023, 600,024, and now 600,025. We've, we've either spent or have a plan to spend all 1.2 million dollars that have been allocated up through 2024 so far, just to give a point of reference. So. And that is everything that I had, as I said, on a very high level overview.
Richard, if I could, um, go over the Sploost Ones, Sploost Two funds in the sense of, uh, what they can be used for and what they cannot be used for.
Sure, sure. So, uh, any usage for Sploost can only be based on the referendum that was passed. And so for the city of Dunwoody, almost for Sploost One, it, I don't have the exact percentage, so you have to, not quoting exact percentage. Roughly, Jay might know what stuff is said, but, uh, uh, roughly 83 and point something percent could go toward transportation-related projects. So, uh, the majority of Sploost, both of them frankly, could be used for transportation-related projects. We put, again, I'm using very rough numbers here, about 10% or so, 12%, 10 to 15% for public safety-related needs within both Sploosts. And within Sploost One, we also have repairs and maintenance of, uh, city facilities as a very small, less than 5% of the total. And so, uh,
So none of the Sploost One can be used for general operating funds to pay salaries, to do anything else. It's dedicated based on the referendum that it goes to those specific capital needs.
But the, but the uses are restricted by state law. So e- even if we wanted to put operating funds in a Sploost, you're not allowed to, correct?
Want to make sure.
Right, right.
Conversation.
No, I understand, but I just want to be clear that we don't get to make up the categories.
No, and Sploost Two is a little different, but not much.
We added just one category for parks, uh, green space. Uh, there was a, uh, I forgot the exact name of the category. I apologize again, I probably have it. But, uh, uh, all the other three categories are the same. So.
And I see the money in the capital project funds. Those are money that can go towards anything, correct?
Or what? Yes, yes. So that is not as, uh, restrictive, for lack of a better word, as Sploost. So yes, those are, we, we put them in, in capital to address capital needs of the city, uh, address assets, for example, and things like that that might need, uh, uh, replacing or anything like that. So yes, but that, that's not as restrictive.
So the two, uh, general capital project funds, the 225 and the 600, is it possible that we could be using Sploost funds for those?
Um, so the capital repair and improvements, I'll start with that one first, because that's for parks and facilities. We set aside a very small portion, uh, within each Sploost for repairs and maintenance related to, uh, um, parks and facilities. And even that's restricted to literally just repairs and maintenance on, on those. That can be, uh, uh, when we use the word improvements for those, because we can extend the useful life, for example, or things like that with those funds. So they're not, uh, not exactly apples to apples, but generally speaking, you could connect the dots like you did. Yes.
I'm just trying to think if council wanted to move it around.
Sure.
Um, in Spots Two, because the rules changed, was the maintenance category still there?
It, it can still be used for maintenance. We, there is, I want to say it's like about 1% of it is, is budgeted by council action for maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
As I said, that's all I had. I'll be happy to answer any questions or, you know, that may come up.
All right. So now we're going to take specific questions and discussion amongst council. Not on cap, if we can put capital after operating, if that's okay, unless it intermingles with what you want to say. I think that would be good.
So Meta Mayor, is this a general discussion overall or is it page by page?
I forgot to share why we were doing the meeting this way versus a committee. And that's because the financial situation of the city has always been challenging based on the founders of the city, the limitations. And I felt like that this is the year, um, where the rubber has really hit the road. Because COVID or the aftermath of COVID potentially has really impacted, um, our revenues. Is, is that a good way to say it? Um, we have four or five empty high-rises or mid-rises in perimeter. Um, we've had two foreclosures that I know about, actually three. And we have to start figuring out, I want to, instead of a few people talking about it and coming forward, I thought it would be the most valuable to have a conversation amongst all of us to figure out, uh, what, you know, where we are now, and I can talk about that if you want me to. And, and where we're going to go in the future. So where we are now is that we have a relatively large hole in our budget for next year. I don't, do you have the chart thingy? Was it about $3 million? Or two point, without ARP money?
Without ARP is $3 million.
And so I made the decision, and we're, I guess we should talk, you, you referenced it to look at the remain, the ARP, the American Rescue Plan was given to municipalities and towns to fill their budgets so that they didn't have to lay off people. That was part of the purpose. And I made the decision to recommend, we had a few categories that we had not touched in, what has it been? Two, two years, three years, we were, none of us were making steps to spend those funds. And then, uh, so I made the recommendation to move those funds into the general budget. That was the purpose of the ARP funds. The second thing is always, we have a recommendation or we are budgeting with our fund balance. And because we have so much money in our fund balance, I mean, we are at nine to 10 months, correct?
Correct.
We only need to be at six. I mean, we only need to be at four. My comfort level is six. The auditor, our outside auditor was here and said, most municipalities sit at two or three months. That would make me very uncomfortable. There's, while we need to address revenue, there are two things. One is that our taxpayers have already funded this large extent, some version of taxes or fees has contributed to the fund balance. We need to use that up. It would be like, to, in my opinion, I'm one vote on this council, we need to, to spend that money before we ask and explore additional revenues. But in November, for property tax reform reasons, there is a vote on the referendum. I don't remember, 5:30, it's got some long, of course, it has some long name, Homestead, something, 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 which doesn't apply to Dunwoody. Our property tax restricted restrictions are already more restrictive than what the state legislature is putting on local governments. So we don't even, the way it works is if you're not, if you don't already have the restrictions the state is prescribing or more restrictive, a local government has till March 1st to say they're opting into this new state, um, restrictions or they're opting out, but we don't have to take any action because we're But we don't have to take any action because we're already more restrictive. It will pass in November, I was just with a bunch of mayors from across the state last week. You know, they're guessing the numbers that will pass by, because it will provide uh property tax relief in communities where they don't have these restrictions. Now, communities have a choice to accept or not accept, again, that doesn't apply to us, or DeKalb County, by the way. Because DeKalb County already has a, a hard freeze. When, if that passes, which again, I think it will, then communities that have a freeze or, or meet the standards, which is a floating homestead exemption, will be allowed to put on the ballot a sales tax, an additional penny sales tax. Part of the referendum in November raises the constitutional, it really doesn't raise it. It removes some of the sales taxes that are already out there from the nine penny cap. I think the cap is nine penny, there are a handful of jurisdictions in Georgia, I'm sowing the weeds, but I just got to listen to this last week, so y'all can learn with me. There are a handful of jurisdictions in the state that already are at ten, um because they have a municipal option sales tax for sewer and water. That doesn't apply to us, they also don't get to participate in this, they don't get the extra penny.
Right, right.
Where, whatever we're at, we're at the cap.
Okay.
So if the, if it were at eight and the cap is the eight, so then those jurisdictions, they're one penny above that. This takes out East Splosh and a couple of other taxes and allows one more penny. If that penny passes, I would estimate that we would receive somewhere around seven to nine million dollars of revenue, because it's a negotiation with DeKalb as part of the process. And we would give some, we would have to give some of that back in property tax relief. So that's where we are today. We have that on the horizon, and plus we have millions of dollars in our budget. We have millions of dollars in the reserves. It may seem like that we should be able to cut our way out of this budget, but we essentially did, right? We didn't add anything new, we can, uh I think there have, there were definitely asked. Um, all we did this year is maintain the level of service, except in public safety. And part of the thing that I think is really important for everyone to understand is that, hold on one second, I have to pull it up. I did not, because it was not, um, it was not. Is is that in two thousand and twenty, we were spending we actually spent about nine million dollars on public safety. And this year, we're budgeting fourteen point two million dollars in public safety. So that's a five million dollar increase, just in public safety. A lot of that's salary, it's much more salary related than growth related, because we only added those positions in twenty four. But when we became a city, the Carl Vincent Institute said we should have twenty one police officers. We never only had twenty one police officers, we started, I don't know, chief probably knows, around forty. Alpharetta, and we're catching up. So Alpharetta is, in some ways, a very similar city to us, because they have a mall, not quite as busy, and they don't have quite as much office commercial space. But they have one. Sorry, I have to look at my graph, my thing. They have, hold on. They have five city employees per thousand people, and we have two point six. We run a, no, a police is more, we're catching up, we're like at one point five and they're at two per thousand residents. But, but nobody is very transparent, Alpharetta is somewhat transparent, but it involved a lot of math. So I'm going to have to get Eric to actually call their city manager. And Sandy Springs has two hundred or so police staff, and we have eighty seven, that's officers and things. And they're about double our population. So anyway, I think we have cha- public safety related challenges on the horizon, because of, we already are struggling to fill the positions, we have to be competitive. And that's where we are today with that. Yeah, oh.
That public safety number doesn't include the ambulance.
No, no.
Short term arrangement with.
Right, we have another year of that, and we're making some progress, maybe. Eric, right, I mean, we're, we're, we, we believe we know the solution. Right, this helps, but we believe we know the long term solution. That's actually doable versus you know, this is not sustainable, I mean, we, we're going to have to have a community conversation about a lot of things in the next few years, but that's where we are.
Madam Mayor, kudos to both you and the city manager for proposing this budget, it's very bare bones, I don't disagree at all. I do agree with the use of fund balance and the aspect of, you know, we need to present a balanced budget. And the only way to get that balanced budget from, to a certain extent, we are at the legislated maximum tax cap, was the use of fund balance, which is, you know, relatively high, and there's no disagreement of using that fund balance. You know, in my discussions with the finance director and city manager, cutting costs down is very difficult. And more importantly, the review of the funding mechanisms that we have here in the city of Dunwoody in the sense of using the ARP funds, that's a necess- it's a necessity to balance this budget, we couldn't do it otherwise. That being said, those are going away. There are huge holes that are going to be filled financially, or people will need to be cut in the future, one or the other. And those are all pretty much public safety related. Something needs to happen, and it happened soon, as far as the planning for the finances. This budget, it's zero based, we're going to make it, we're going to do okay, we're reducing the fund balance. But that being said, we have our hands tied. We were one of the first cities, you know, founded uh here in Georgia, and we actually had our hands tied a lot tighter behind our backs than any other city that's been founded after us. We have uh financial constraints that are almost, you know, unbearable. We've done and worked those challenges for fifteen years, and now, you know, with the inflationary costs, and uh it's just, it's unsustainable. Something needs to be done, we need to look at options to, you know, either cut expenses or raise the capital at some point. So again, kudos for doing what needed to be done in this budget, but next year is not, not going to be a pretty ask. Especially when, uh, Richard, when are our contracts up for city services for renegotiating?
Sure, so those expire the end of two thousand and twenty five, December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five.
And those were our five year contracts?
Correct.
So five years ago, the expenses or the contracted prices were much lower.
As a COVID.
So we're anticipating much larger contract for the same level of service or a drastic cut in services to keep it the same price?
That is a correct statement, yes.
Okay, so we're not expecting those to be reduced, we're expecting larger expenses, but the revenues are the same. We are, all these ARP aspects that we are not going to get funding for, so those are going to be financial things that we need to fund. But yet the revenue right now, based on current projections, is not there.
That is correct.
Okay, again, kudos for this budget, the next one is scary.
Right, so we have enough fund balance, as I understand it, that we could do, we could do another year without new revenue. I'm not saying we should, oops, I lost John, but um I'm not saying we should. But um, I'm sa- and we have to talk about it, this penny sales tax is a real possibility. A lot of things have to fall into place for it to be voted on in twenty five, it's a very tight calendar. But I'm somewhat optimistic, I'm also a realist. The other possibility, which would not necessarily be addressed in twenty five, is that my sense is, is it, this is a county, it has, it's like Splosh. So it, though it's for operating, it has to be county and city together. And my sense from talking to mayors is there are definitely counties that are not going to cooperate. Again, DeKalb doesn't have to make a choice, because they already have the freeze. And so the um must, I believe the legislature will step in again if people are not participating, because they're obsessed with lowering at least growth of assessed values. But we won't really know, but we do have to start talking about what we're doing and how we're doing it over the next year. And, and I want to make a point, though they left, that, which is, is that to, to balance this budget without using fund balance or the ARP funds, which ARP funds are essentially revenue, the state, the federal government gave it to us, is to um we, we would have to make really deep cuts, but you make those cuts, I'm not so good at explaining this, but maybe, Richard, you make those cuts once, and they're not there to make the next year. And then you make more cuts, and you know, I had been asking for a model where we project out when we would have to cut public safety. Like if I said, public safety is, is sanctified, you can't cut it. It's probably three years, because you could cut all the parks to get three million savings, and the next year you would find three million savings, and then we're out of things to cut. And I think it's really important for the public to understand that. But also, how, can we show the slide on, let me see what it's called, sorry. I think it's called hold on, give me one second. I think it's called property tax. Yes, please, can we put that one up? So I did this last year, and um my friend's house in Sandy Springs, when I went to do it yesterday, has increased in value, because they don't have a freeze. And so I couldn't, I couldn't compare apples to apples. And so the, can you go to the next slide? So it's last year, but it's the same thing. So we are the blue, and, and you can see, um, unincorporated DeKalb is orange and Sandy Springs is green. Stuck with the colors. And you can see that uh unincorporated DeKalb is paying the most of all three of us on their ta- tax bill, including schools. Then I showed you the tax bill without schools. And that, and that's because we have a freeze in Sandy Springs, largely, that's the difference between the unincorporated DeKalb and Sandy Springs. And then obviously, unincorporated DeKalb doesn't have uh city taxes, they pay more in county taxes. But overall, our tax burden, and this is, I should have said, this is as close as I could find to house, where mine, I'm the Dunwoody house. So as close as I could find to my values, um, this is where we are. So um, and I, so I want to show that, because you know, one of the things that people need to understand is that uh you're still paying a lot less than unincorporated DeKalb is. So if you had, you know, I can look at the actual numbers, but I think the unincorporated bill was fifteen hundred dollars more than my bill.
Madam Mayor, I completely agree with you, if I could jump in, the issue is, is that the city was founded under a referendum
Right.
which made promises.
Right.
We have a city charter, which
Right.
with the, the citizens ratified. And this, the, the legislature passed, the governor signed, and those are the constraints that we're working under. And again, I agree with what you're saying, the comparison, the question is, how do we change that?
Right, and we're going to have to work on that in the next year, we're going to have to really monitor, the sales tax, if it happens, would solve a lot of problems for us. Well, revenue coming in twenty six. Right, revenue coming in twenty six, but we have enough in reserves, I believe, correct, to make it one more year without increasing a revenue source. We need to spend next year figuring out what we're doing, and I, you know, I think people should pay, I think we have to fix it. And so regardless of what happens with the sales tax.
And what if it doesn't pass, and what, where is that?
Well, that's why we got to spend next year working simultaneously, it has to get on the ballot, it's not even, so the, the November referendum is, allows you to put it on the ballot, if November passes, and it will pass. So uh, uh based on everything I'm hearing.
Madam, Madam Mayor, if that passes, when would the, would we have that on our local ballot then?
I think most likely November, because.
And could that be in place for revenue funding and budgeting on January one of two thousand and twenty six?
I think it was sixty days after it passes, so the first month of January, I think, or it's sixty days. I think you'd get the revenue pretty quickly. No?
I, I'm not sure, a sixty day turnaround will be possible with adding an extra penny into the systems.
Okay. So maybe not, I don't know, you know, actually, they did, I think the sixty days was between the quickest you could get on the ballot or something, maybe the sixty days was something else. I know that Rob is going to some training, and Tom, I think.
Yeah, we're all going to the same thing up in Alpharetta.
Right, and several people are going to some, a class to get, and I li- I had all that training the other day, I'm not sure they talked about when the revenue would flow. No, we already have it, so we don't have, if, if, like Sandy, like Fulton County that doesn't have a freeze or a floating homestead exemption, I don't think, they have to opt in or opt out by March first. And if you're opting out, you have to have three meetings or something, but, but one, if you already have a freeze, you don't have to do anything, because it's more extreme than the three percent growth allow, or the CPI, whatever it ended up being allowed in the floating homestead exemption. So, and one, part of the motivation for this is that assessed values go up. And when your, you know, your, your costs go up, when your values increase, and in some parts of Georgia, where the, particularly where the governor has put these super sites, people are seeing four hundred percent increases in two or three years. And so, but it'll be interesting to see, because the counties and the cities, they don't always get along, and so it's going to be interesting, but the legislature is pretty determined to do something, so we'll see. That's what I have. But I agree with you, John, we have to address this. Anybody else have anything? Tom, so do we have a capital presentation today for the CIP?
I have a, I have slides of what is included in the budget this year, I, so we could do.
And, oh, go ahead, oh, that's fine, I didn't, I'm sorry, I should have turned my head.
That's right, um, again, just framing this, I, I think we're all saying similar variations, again, thank you for what you're doing here. When I look at, let's just, I'm a process person as well, so number one, I appreciate having a council meeting as a whole to present this, because it's, we're all on equal footing that, and, and so right, we are like, I keep on going back to the citizens saying, we are like the board of directors, we are the executive setting the vision, the guidance, budgets, policies, plans, and so on. We don't do day to day, that's Eric Litten, the city manager. But really, simply put, our citizens expect more from our city government as original envisioned in two thousand and eight, right? There's no, no way around it, they expect more, the quality of life, the sense of place, and so on. I, I, I have a generic question, how can we get on the same terms for revenue as unincorporated DeKalb? Does that require legislative, I mean, all of the above, considering?
Yes, because, well, it's complicated, because fire is in there, it's, it's they don't have the, we have a one mil exemption, they don't have, there's just stuff, yeah.
May, maybe we have to have like a matrix of a, here's, here's a decision brief, here's, here's like, okay, here's three or four things we need to consider as options. I, I'd love, I would really appreciate, I want to be super conservative as well, saying on January one, or as close to as January one, twenty twenty six, we have a long term systemic revenue stream in place, that, that this is addressed, and we don't have to have the Band-Aid approach. Personally, I, I believe sales tax is regressive. I'm, I'm a big belief of use, if I'm a user, that I, I should be able to be funding those uses of those facilities, those public amenities, that infrastructure and so on, versus a, a, all of the above, revenue uh from a tax, but that's, that's my, my thoughts. And um, it seems like I, I, again, the one time funds, I'm, I'm a bit, you know, the recreational equity, the one million dollar, you know, there was hope that we could have done something on the east side or on Winter's Chapel potentially for that. That, that's gone, right, um, and, and whatnot, so that's just, I, I really want to see that, yeah, come Jan- That's just, I I really want to see that, yeah, come January one, twenty twenty six, or as close to it, we've got a plan in place. But we've got to work on it now because we have to look at legislative deadlines or what needs to have happen. What other municipal, I know we're, we're handcuffed, Brookhaven, I I wonder if they're in the same boat as we are.
They're in similar, I do not think they have the one mil exemption. Do they? Brookhaven, and their freeze was after the recession. And so our freeze is significant, and they've built lots of apartments, they've had development differently than we have. But some, the, the millage rate cap is actually a little higher in theirs as well. And so, similar sort of concept, but they don't have the one mil exemption and they don't, their freeze was not during the recession.
We got to remember that that one mil exemption was really a wash for a fee that was. Coming to us, Jay, you can explain it better, but that's, no, we're no longer talking apples to apples, it's apples to oranges because the fees changed and all the rest. Can you explain it just real quick?
Yeah, the, the Twitter version of it is the original one mil exemption was to mimic the host. Decrease that the county received at that time, so in other words, your police rate, your parks rate went down because of host. It didn't apply to here. Well, the E, the host law has changed. And therefore that one mil exemption, which reduced property taxes, is basically now a double dip for the citizens.
That's correct, so that's why it's almost a legislative fix that needs to be done to correct the mistake that they made by not exempting when that. When that was changed was made.
Do, is that, is that what that would entail? A, a, a local legislative change so that our local body would change it or sign by the governor?
Any revocation of a, of a homestead exemption requires voter approval.
Are we planning to eat in here? I didn't think we were allowed to eat in here. Whatever y'all want to do. Tell me what you want to do. We can just keep going. Just keep going. So. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm fine, the capital stuff, I'll, I'll, I'm good for now for the operation stuff.
Are, are we gonna talk about special tax district? I mean, are we gonna talk about something like that in terms of police? Because if what we're funding is in, in large part is police and that's what citizens want, and this is bigger than ever. Envisioned by the original council, this is the thing that people can get behind, and this is the thing we need funded.
Yes, so next year we'll spend time talking about all that. That takes a vote as well and.
A citizen vote?
No, a special tax district does not.
But.
But there's a procedure to do it.
But you might, it takes two calendar years though, right, Jay? We have to get something in by the end of one calendar year to have something in place. It's almost a two year process though. If we need something in place by twenty twenty six.
Right, so maybe we, you can, you can, you can create it this year, by the end of this year, fund it another year, you don't even have to fund it next year. But you have to create it, and it's interesting, there are cities in Georgia that are doing special tax districts for their entertainment districts. I mean, they're small cities, but they create the special tax district around the entertainment district. Thought that was interesting. I saw that.
If our option ends up being underfunding the police or, you know, reducing positions, no, I mean, if it's, this, this is, then we go. We do this, right?
Right.
And and that would, if we wanted it placed on twenty twenty six, January one, we need to do something before the end of this year.
Right, that's right.
So we, we, we're very tight timeline.
I think it's worth discussing.
Of, of like, next thirty days, we need to know whether we're gonna do it by December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Madam Mayor, point of information, if I could.
Yes.
Again, I'm old school, I, I passed the charter, we're, I was involved early on. The citizens voted that the. Tax rate could not go up, the maximum tax rate could not go up without a referendum of the citizens. We're now talking about a special tax district, which is, sounds like a tax rate increase to me. Can we have a briefing on that? Because again, I asked, at the last cafer, the cafer that was released. Actually had a sentence in there that said we have to go to the citizens. I raised that point, the city manager, city attorney. Said something different. I'm not sure the citizens, you know, we, council may have be briefed from executive session aspect. On legalities on which we can and cannot do. But again, I'm not sure the citizens have been fully briefed on the same legalities of what we can. And the, being, something being legal might not be the equivalent of. Something being the right thing to do based on past promises. So I just want to make sure that we start the discussion. There's the legality aspect of what we may be able to do, there's promises are made from the start of the city. And, and expectations moving forward, and I'm not sure we are aligned in those realms.
So, yes, we will work on all that. I think that. I, I think you're right and we will bring that in. I, I have a concern and I'd love to hear your perspective on it. So Brookhaven tried to eliminate their freeze this year. It failed miserably. They. The chap, my concern and. And there's like. Fifteen years ago, I believe that the founders of the city believed that they had to sell the city based on finances. Sandy Springs sold it on, you get what you pay for, you, you know, we're not getting the benefit. Of what we're paying in. They never promised, they promised to deliver better services and probably for some savings. My concern. My, my big picture concern is that we. I'm concerned that because my neighbor believes that they don't need increased public safety and that we can decrease public safety. And it doesn't matter to them, that they are willing to risk. The. Public safety.
Madam Mayor, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, I'm just saying that council is sometimes aware of things that the citizens aren't. We were talking about a special tax district, which mayor may not, some people mayor may not know about nor believe is right, necessary. So I just want to make sure that.
Yes, and there are rules, I mean, you don't just get to put it on the. If I remember correctly, when we talked about it a few years ago, you don't get to just put it on the agenda. And vote on it, there's a whole process and we, leading up to the process, we would need to be talking about it publicly and trying to figure out. But the reality is, is that. Just in a big picture way that citizens need to understand is that we were built on the values and perimeter center, the city. And no one could have foreseen, and we were built during the great recession, but we didn't, you know, Carl Vincent, it wasn't just that they only said twenty police officers. They rep, what happened with Carl Vincent is they replicated what was being spent by decab. No parks, so there's no parks either in that budget. So we need a lot of community discussion, I think, about what. What's gonna happen? Like, what it looks like if we leave things alone, because I actually believe that two percent growth. Might be the best we see for a few years. And we actually had. Negative growth in the residential di- am I explaining that right? Negative growth in the residential digest this year because of exemptions. We, we exempt more in residential property taxes than we collect. So how we communicate with the public about. What that does, and I'll give you, like, this budget is, there's no extras in this budget, even if we need something like, my friend, the mayor of Decatur. Their problem is more significant than ours, but they're gonna spend four percent of their budget next year on addressing the homeless issue. I, they just advertised for a position. I think they're, I mean, it doesn't include, I saw the salary, right, and include benefits, like fifty to eighty thousand dollars. I can't even find that money here, but everybody wants to message me in the middle of the night that there's a homeless person. So. I think in the scheme of things, as we talk about what the future city looks like, right? I mean, I think that's all got to be part of the conversation, but then we also have to work hard to educate our residents slash voters. That the status quo isn't gonna work, because if things, if we have to start cutting public safety, then perimeter falls further behind. The safety is number one.
We definitely have challenges. Our residents are actually, believe it or not, they're wearing a set of golden handcuffs. In the sense of seniors living in huge houses, because they, doesn't make sense for them to move anywhere else.
I think the challenge to getting the word out, to educating the voters, is potentially self evident from last November, twenty twenty three. As well, so I think it's gonna be a big challenge and I don't know if there's any. If there's a history of any municipality in the state of Georgia or the US that has voluntarily said, citizens, do you want to raise your military? Did they pass it or not? I'd, I'd be curious to find out if that's ever been successful.
Well, people look at their overall tax bill, right, and we know at present that the decab schools is charging us more than is legally allowed. So is that an avenue that we address as well?
Well, and also, at this meeting I was at last week. It's clear that the school systems, they have to opt in or opt out of this tax, this, uh, this freeze, and they don't get the one penny. And so, the, one of the. Themes of this meet, not the meeting, but the discussion was, is that, you know, the ledge, without fail, everyone in the rooms, the largest part of their property tax bill is overwhelmingly their schools. And the consensus was, is if the school systems don't opt in, the legislation will have failed. Because the small savings they get from county and. County and city municipal taxes, if they're in an incorporated area. The small. The small amount they save is not at all compared to their, I mean, their school taxes, I mean, if you look. So in Fulton County, their school taxes are sma- smaller than ours, less than ours by a lot. Like shockingly a lot. My friend's house, I think she pays three thousand dollars in school taxes in Sandy Springs, and we pay forty five hundred, so our overall bill is the same. So we have to work with our. New school board member, because decab, decab ought to opt in, or they ought to, they believe they need legislation to change the military. Not yet, they, they think they need, they think they can't do it without legislation is what I've been told.
Reduce it to the legally required amount?
Yes.
That doesn't make any sense.
Well, I don't know what, how they got above it. I don't know, but anyway, it's worth, I mean, you gotta pressure your school board members, and they need to fix the senior exemption in decab too. Tom, are you here?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Alright. Uh, yeah, so I, if I could just make a few comments, first of all, before I make some comments, I just want to thank. The mayor, Eric J, Richard, and all the staff for putting this budget together. It's, you've done a lot with a little, it's, it's, it's not an easy task. I think we continue to provide very high services to our residents. On a very modest revenues, but. As has been, is being discussed, there, there are challenges that lie ahead. I think we have some opportunities to kind of just jump in on the current conversation. With revenues, with some of the. Changes that have, the new legislation at the state level. To maybe. Address some of our shortcomings, using, using that to make it at least initially revenue neutral for homeowners, and what I mean by that is. You know, the point has already been raised about, like, the one mil exemption was there to mirror. The cab, the host, which is now been changed and it's, it's double dipping. Well, now, with this new local option sales tax, and again, we're still learning the details of that, and there's a lot that needs to, to come together with that, but. Per, a portion of that is, is, is. Goes back to. Property tax relief, so perhaps we can. Look at, and I, and again, I know there's a lot of moving parts of this, perhaps we can explore options where. That property tax relief that we give back with this new sales tax, if it's proposed. Kind of fixes the one mil exemption that we already have, and we removed the one mil exemption, and I know there, again, I know there's. A referendum, the, the procedures for that need to be worked out, but. We're fixing something with the existing legislation, and I think also there's an opportunity perhaps. With the, the state legislation, with the, with the, with the property assessments being tied to. CPI, that maybe we can mimic what the state is doing and get on board with the rest of the state, and again, I know all of the. Procedural aspects of doing that by referendum or however it is, would need, needs a lot of. Work, but I think there's opportunity for us to take advantage of the current. State legislation to hopefully. Set the city up for success in the future, so. I'll just, that's my, my two cents on that. I also just toss in too that I do. Agree with the statements that were made earlier by the mayor and John with, with respect to revenues and use of fund balance. That is, as the mayor pointed out, that, that is the taxpayer's money in essence, that. You know, it, it's not the city's goal to, to build up our, our piggy bank, if you will, and, and the year with additional revenues. I think it's smart to have that reserve in place, where, you know, and that six month target, I think is a good solid number. Spending that, spending down that reserve. To that, closer to that six month level is just good financial strategy, and I think a good use of taxpayer money. You know, and again, that, that was not the intent, in a perfect world, we, we end up. With, you know, revenues and expenses being equal, but, you know, there's a lot of variables that change that and. You know, we've ended with, I think, additional revenues, there's a lot of reasons. Why that's happened, where we've been able to build up the reserve, but a big part of that is effective financial management by our staff, so. It's, I think it's very appropriate to use that excess fund balance. In the way we're doing it and the ways that's proposed in the budget, so, thank you, that's all I have for now, I'll turn off my mic now.
Do we want to go on to capital? Do we have slides?
I have a couple other questions.
Oh, that's fine, go ahead, go ahead, that's fine.
The overall.
Yes, overall, that's fine.
Flip through a few pages. Okay, so the ARPA one funds will be spent completely at the end of twenty four, and we won't be discussing that in the future, correct?
That is our plan right now, correct.
Alright, and then the ARPA two funds. We. Will be spent, it is, maybe I just need to be closer. Like we're spending about two million and twenty five of the ARPA two. And. How much that has to all, ARPA two in total has to be completely spent by the year twenty six?
So, no, ARPA two did not, does not have the same strings attached to it as ARPA one does. Now, internally, I think we've tried to mimic the best we can, ARPA one and ARPA two, but. Generally speaking, that is not, uh, ARPA two does not have the same strings as ARPA one.
What do we have? What's the fund balance of ARPA two? Cause that's.
What's left?
What's left?
Sure, so. We ended the year, I'm going off the top of my head, so I, I'll have to go back and pull a cafer, act for. Roughly seven million dollars is what was left at the end of twenty twenty three. As I said, we're gonna spend down a good portion this year. In twenty twenty five, the plan is to have. One year, that'll be the last year for the mental health co-responder, that'll be the last year for EMS. That'll be the last year for the safe streets position, and then. Depending on how safe streaks construction goes, potentially. We had it set aside for a grant match, we think we were gonna find out about that grant match soon, if we were gonna get the grant or not. And. If not, then that's available for construction. That could spread into twenty twenty six potentially, but those, all the other ones we're funding that's available, cybersecurity, for example, will be done this year, twenty twenty four, we believe. Or definitely by twenty twenty five, and the majority of the other ones will be done this year or next year.
Again, I'm just looking for, I see what we're doing, we have two million and twenty five for ARPA two.
Yes.
I mean, the anticipated uses for twenty six, and does it, does not all have to be spent by twenty six, but it doesn't sound like there's much in there, it will all be spent by twenty six.
On the current plan, the majority of it will be spent, yes. But in twenty twenty five.
Safe streets would be fetching a federal grant, and I'm sure you know that sometimes. It's. Takes a little while to start construction, but yeah, everything else should be gone, I think, right?
Yeah, yes, I do believe so, I do believe so.
Yeah, some of the federal funding, I didn't see our, I didn't see the city have done what he listed. From what I saw. Nine one one. Chief, this might be for you, actually, if you may. Chatcom, nine one one, there's funds in, there's funds out. What is the? What is the status of Chatcom? What is the status of our contract? How long does our contract go? Are we ready? How's the funding stream? Are we covering the expenses? What's going on with Chatcom? And can you tell me what would happen when that contract is over and? You know, worst case scenario, maybe best case scenario, we have to start our own nine one one in sixty days, and how does that happen? You know, if we were told, you have to start your own nine one one, if that were ever happened, tell me about the contract length, tell me about what's happening with. tell me about the contract length, tell me about what's happening with Chatcom, tell me what's happening from that perspective.
Um, I'm not specific, uh, don't have specifics on the contract or what our funding is coming in and out. Um, the city manager and I have met with, uh, Shambly Police Department, uh, and their city manager as well, uh, about possible partnership with them. Uh, when the deputy chief returns, um, this week, uh, him and I plan on doing a tour uh, of their facility to see what their capabilities are, um, and what we can do to, um, possibly partner with them. Um, of course, I want to do a lot of back, um, you know, a lot of investigation on what, you know, what kind of personnel we need to, staff, extra consoles, um, et cetera. But, yeah, to the funding piece and the current contract with Chatcom, I'm not familiar with.
Councilman, just to elaborate a little bit more on what the chief's saying, which is currently the nine-one-one fee covers our cost. As future goes on, um, part of the thing, you know, we do contract with Chatcom, which is owned by the city of Johns Creek and the city of Sandy Springs. They're the owners. Brookhaven and Dunn Woody are subscribers. We are looking at some other options, as the chief mentioned. It would be to join, uh, to keep it on the, the cab side of the line. The possibility, it's like any other entity, you know, we want to know what our options are and what's the best solution for us. Both long-term and, you know, financially, for public safety. Um, but from that standpoint, we are looking at several different options. We'll keep you posted on that as time goes on, but right now, it's a net zero on the cost.
And as far as the contract with Chatcom, is it month to month at this point? Is it, do we have a contract for end of twenty-five? What's, what's the status?
Yeah, on that contract, it's my understanding there are outs on that contract that we can, that we can remove ourselves since we're a subscriber and not an owner. So from that, but right now it is an active contract. It's current. There's no sunset date. I believe we've entered into a, or it continues to roll forward. They renegotiate the terms every few years. Um, and I believe that's up for the end of this year for final renewal.
And to be clear, they provide a very high, excuse me, a very high level.
No, I'm very happy with the service. I'm just, I need to prepare financially. If they say at the end of twenty-five, we're done, or at the end of twenty-four, they're done, how does that affect us in twenty-five? So again, I wanted to know, how does this current budget prepare for any possible change for Chatcom, for us taking over our own nine-one-one center?
The current budget is a status quo. It's what's in the current budget.
And I don't, I believe that if Sandy Springs and Johns Creek were gonna make a big change, they would give us plenty of notice. Cause we're neighbors. Uh, it might not feel adequate, even if it's a year, but Eric and chief have been preparing. We don't have any sign that, really, that they're doing that.
No, I understand. I just figured it's worth a conversation.
Well, and I think fire, I had a conversation with Tom, he didn't love the other day, which is as if, if these fixes for EMS, which we're actually pretty positive, something positive is gonna happen, which who knows what that means if I'm feeling positive, but, um, is that if we can't fix it, we, at some point, I mean, Dunn Woody residents are paying, what's on your bill for fire? How many mills? Can you see it? It's, it's fire. Yeah. Um, yeah, to something. And so, um, something, point something, but, um, you know, fire is the only other way to address EMS under the current setup. But I'm hope, you know, again, I'm hopeful that we're gonna have a solution from the EMS council that works, or at least is worth trying for a few years.
Correct. Our service delivery strategy is, includes fire. We have the ability to do our own fire at any point. But we also have contracted and have agreements with Decap to do the service for us.
And for most of what, it turns out that if, when they contract with a private provider, their obligation to deliver medical services goes way down, apparently in Georgia. I have not fact-checked, but that's what the lobbyists told me. And so we, you know, the rest of their services are fine, are good, or better than good. It's just that this, this is the most important thing they do, is health, you know, emergencies, so.
If I could add just real quickly on E-nine-one-one to try to answer your question a little bit. Um, so at the end of twenty-twenty-three, our fund balance in the E-nine-one-one fund was one-point-six million dollars. So if, if we wanted to do something on our own, we would have some fund balance available to put toward that. Um, if we do continue to see fairly significant cost increases, uh, related to E-nine-one-one. Revenue is covering right now, as Eric said. If we had to dip into fund, we do have fund balance if, if expenditures exceed revenue there in future years, we do have some fund balance that could bridge that gap for a number of years. So, but we are carrying one-point-six million dollars in fund balance in the E-nine-one-one.
Yeah, thank you. The state legislature raised the self on the nine-one-one fee statewide. So again, hopefully to match costs. If costs keep going up for other nine-one-one centers around the state, then maybe the state legislature will match the funding mechanism.
And, and one thing I will say too, Mary, since we're just on the Chatcom topic, is it's all based on the percentage of calls. And right now, whereas several, last, at the last negotiation, Brookhaven and Dunn Woody were neck and neck, and actually Dunn Woody had to pay a higher portion than Brookhaven. Now that has reversed significantly. Brookhaven has a higher call percentage, therefore their cost, we're the lowest cost of the four cities. And, um, which is, you know, unique, but from that standpoint, so those cost share. We do feel that number that if we stay in the current model, that we're in good condition there.
Could I ask, it was brought up the fire. I don't, I don't want to like say this realistically, but just from a procedural pers- perspective, understand the spirit of the law wasn't here in two thousand and eight, when the city was incorporated from the charter perspective. Understand in the charter, this military cap, uh, implied expressly, et cetera, legal or not, whether, whether it goes to a citizen referendum. If we were to take on fire, is that expressly written then, therefore we also have to go to the citizens to ask? Or taking that on because we have to have.
We talked about it. The assumption was the fire military rate would just pass over.
Much like every other fee, the, it would pass over. We would adopt the fire. No, I'm not sure if that fire rate is locked.
Well, you, it's not, and they, right. So the last time we were seriously talking about this, and we're not, to be clear, in case the media is listening, seriously discussing this. Um, Decap lowered the fire military rate, do you remember?
They lowered the, again, it's always a discussion, are they providing us a good service at a fair price? And at some point, the, they may say the rates, they play with the rates up and down on various things. If they raise fire too high, it makes it cost advantageous to us to start our own. So they keep it where it makes sense for us to stay with them, and they provide a good service, and I'm happy with it so far. But if it ever got so, either the service got really bad, or if the cost got too high, we would have the option to do ours, our own. Again, it's the startup cost. It's the million-dollar vehicles. That's the expensive part.
Well, it's on the start. We're paying, I'm paying more for fire than I am for city, right? Cause I'm paying, you know, um, three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars for city, and I'm paying four-hundred-and-sixty for fire. But yeah, to talk about startup costs, you talk about, okay, we're gonna go build a new fire station. Where's that money come from? Yeah, and the replacement of the capital projects money, that's, that's, where's all that gonna come from? Is it gonna come from that, that one military?
So we are not talking about it seriously. It's just the only strategy left for EMS, if the council doesn't fix it, and we can't afford the extra ambulance. Because if we control the fire, we would have our public safety people develop policies that had first on the scene consistently. So. Okay, John, whoever. Was that it?
Yeah, it's pretty much it.
Yes. Stacy, have anything? Oh, where do you see answers? Oh.
Um, Richard, my apologies since I missed a large part of your presentation. Um, and you guys can just tell me if it was covered. What is not in the budget? What, what got cut? And just say, Stacy, you missed it. That's fine.
No, so, uh, we didn't, I've got some slides that I could show on enhancement requests that were not included. If that's, is that your question? Or? Sure, sure.
Yeah, if you could just show those just so.
Sure.
I mean, we can see what is all in it, but we know some, we know decisions had to be made, so I just kind of would like to see what.
Sure. Um, let me see if I can get them to pull. Hopefully Ginger or somebody's back there.
Catherine, I couldn't hear you. What was that?
Asking Lynn if the other cities in Decap are talking about the school tax, uh, over assessment.
No.
Then, nobody brings that up.
Not really. I mean, some of us do. I don't know that everybody's really aware. We have some educators that are mayors, so that, you know, they're not, it's all about protecting. Oh, okay. Did you just make yourself a host?
Ryan, it's up on this laptop here. And I'm doing something wrong, woman.
The last two years, Decap has finally lowered the military rate, like a tenth of a mil.
It doesn't matter. It's a valid rate.
But it's also assessed values. You don't have a freeze. So everybody's, and you should, the digest, right? The digest is still. Well, we don't have time for that.
Okay, should be up on your screen now.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I will walk through, uh, enhancement request the best, uh, to my ability. Um, I've already summarized this a little bit. So our enhancement request came in two forms. The general fund had enhancement requests, and then stormwater had enhancement requests as well. Uh, so we already talked about the levels of service. So those are the only two funds that we had enhancement requests in, um, talked about general fund, two-point-seven million in requests, one-point-three included, one-point-five not included. For, and stormwater fund, we had six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars in requests. All of that is included in the budget for twenty-twenty-five for stormwater, and they have their own specific funding. Um, and then three service levels that we talked about previously as well. So, um, first one, this is the same level of service, and these are all the requests. Uh, the far right column shows whether it is included in the budget or not. For the same service level, uh, all of these requests are included. Um, I can attempt to walk one by one. I don't know, like, very specific details about every single one of them, but uh, IT had a twelve-hundred-dollar request that's included, facilities, the hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Parks is the two-hundred and, uh, gosh, sixteen, uh, no, it's more than that. Two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand roughly of, of parks, uh, requests that were included. Police had the flock cameras, and then, um, other requests, and I'm gonna page down, um, uh, other, other requests in there for police that totaled their two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, I believe. And then Public Works, all of their requests are listed there as well. Uh, the staffing contract right away, utility costs are the main thing, as well as supplies, uh, and, uh, traffic signal maintenance contract, just general contract increases, to be honest with you. And let's see, I think that was it. Community Development had one small one for two-thousand dollars. So again, same level of service, eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-one-hundred requested. All of that is included in the twenty-twenty-five budget. For one-time requests, um, so this is where, again, uh, we had, we had a significant, we had a good amount of requests, and not all of them were included. The first one is, uh, I call it a finance and city clerk. It's kind of a document contract management software, uh, we've talked about before, um, internally. It's about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, we estimated. That is not included in the budget. The salary survey is included in the budget. And then Public Works had a couple of requests that are not included. Uh, they requested new CCTV traffic cameras. They wanted a, uh, APWA accreditation coordinator, uh, school flasher, remote monitoring, sidewalk ramp replacement, and then some right-of-way, uh, landscape enhancement. All of that is not included in the budget for Public Works. And I think that's, Parks had a wayfinding signage within, or inside Brookrun Park for about a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand. That's not included. And then the, uh, community development, as we talked about, the two-hundred-thousand for the comp plan code rewrite. So that's what makes up the nine-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand and in the total requests. And again, two-hundred-and-thirteen of those were included, and seven-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand were not included.
You go back to Public Works, please.
Sure.
I know, no, we all really want it to do. Can you, Eric, can you explain what the CCTV traffic cameras were for? Oh, are they for the room upstairs?
Yes, that, that's part, that's part of our TV network upstairs. And also, that will all be integrated into the real-time crime center as well, all the cameras that we have. But those are the, the new cameras are part of the road network.
But we're not paying for them, so we're not getting them? That's what it says, no?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then, more importantly, the school flasher remote model, monitoring, what, I mean, you might need to call Michael down.
And Michael, he's here, Michael's actually online with us. And so on that one.
Can he, does he want to pipe in?
He can tell us what that one is specifically. Michael, uh, you promote yourself there.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, you gotta talk louder, though.
Okay. Alright, they, uh, the, back on the traffic camera thing, um, that's actually going to get covered, I think, by a request that police have on the agenda for tonight. So that one will be taken care of, I think, if that's approved. And then the school flasher remote monitoring is, uh, currently, we only have one set of school flashers that, um, we can program remotely, and we can turn it on, on and off remotely. Uh, this would be to bring all the others up to that, uh, standard. And the main use of it is, other than you can see when something, it maybe has gone wrong remotely. Um, right now, we only turn the cameras off, or the flashers off in the summer and on a, or on a long break. But now with the school system, they're gonna have a number of one-week breaks throughout the year. That system would make it, uh, where we could turn those on and off more frequently when school's not actually in session. Because right now, without the remote system, you know, somebody has to go out to each flasher to turn it on and then go back out and turn it, you know, turn it off and on.
I thought it was something where you could watch the, the herd monitoring. Um, I thought you could watch that in Austin. Could you not? That might be.
Remote.
The, the ones at Austin, the ones at Austin are, do have that capability.
Okay.
Uh, none of the other ones do right now. The ones at Austin are newer.
One second. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Michael, um, for that explanation. The next one really looks a little troubling to me. Can you, tell me about, we're not doing, uh, ADA, uh, sidewalk ramp replacements. What's going on there?
We, you know, of course, we do them when we have projects that incorporate, you know, new sidewalks or new ramps. Um, and we do them on a case-by-case basis, if there's somebody that it's, reports to us that it's a barrier for them. We have done those. Um, this would be to go out and accelerate that and just take a whole corridor and say, okay, we're gonna upgrade all the ramps on that corridor. Mo- and mo- most of the ramps that we have, almost all of them are wheelchair accessible. What makes them not compliant is they don't have the visual, the, the tactical pads on them for visually impaired. So that, that's a lot of what needs to be upgraded. There's very few, if any, left that aren't accessible by wheelchair.
Is there any way just to retrograde and retrofit and put the, uh, the bumps on? Just those in place?
Yes, if, if they, um, if they're compliant otherwise, you know, some of them, even if there's a ramp, the, uh, the slope may not be as flat as it's supposed to be. So, you know, it just depends. If, if everything else is okay, then yes, you can just go put the pad down on it. So, so we are doing some now. This would just be to accelerate that program and, you know, do a whole corridor.
So you feel we're still in compliance, then basically with the, the spirit of the law?
Yes, there's no requirement to have it done by a certain date. It, it just, the requirement is we have to identify where the issues are, and then we have to be working towards addressing those. But there's no, you have to have it done by this date or anything like that, just because for most jurisdictions, there's a lot more out there that has to. for most jurisdictions, there's a lot more out there that has to be upgraded than what you could do with your current resources in a year or two.
When we get to capital, maybe we can talk about this more because, um, well, because I have thoughts about the 285 bridge. So that's a lot of money sitting there potentially. Okay, was there anything else anybody had questions on? Let me ask you a question on the document contract management software. Would this have switched us to a software like Sandy Springs uses? Where the minutes, like, when you go to their agenda after the fact of the minutes, it tells you what minute to go to and the, it links you to the audio. Do you know?
It is the beginning of a process on both that and internal document circulation, which is the priority. But to do that, we wanted to incorporate into that at some point.
That's a lot of money, so we'll just have to wait.
And I think there's still more information until Stacy, but what's not being funded as far as the personnel and the police, just a while.
Sure. I'll keep going.
Yes, please.
One-time request, so that's the remaining there. We talked about what's funded and not funded. So I'll move on to enhancement requests. So the expanded service level, this is above and beyond your base budget, if you want to use those words. Uh, we had a couple. Created contracted social services grant unit for $328,000 and a telehealth services contract for $100,000. Those are really the large ones that are not included. Information Technology had three requests. We are including the vendor security risk management one. The, and I think the contract and signature tracking is very similar to what we talked about with the, with the document and contract process of, and then powered DMS is, is not in there. For HR, we included one, the AP for law enforcement, and we did not fund the, uh, summer internship program with, with Georgia Tech. And then for police, we did fund all of these. The mobile vice investigative code rule, the, uh, the contract medical director services, the, uh, legal defense fund. We funded all those for police. And then Public Works had two, a, uh, contracted utility coordinator and a gateway sign landscape maintenance as well. Those were, there's two requests that are not funded in there. Uh, parks had, their one large request really was for the software upgrade for Civic Rec that is included. And let's see, for community development, uh, we did do the front yard. Not supposed to say not front. Not supposed to say yard, not year, front yard tree and, uh, uh, price increase, typing too fast. Um, and, uh, we did not include entertainment stickers and any other costs that they had requested within community development. Nor did we fund any payments for the planning commission or the zoning board of authorities, uh, any payments for them or anything like that. So, uh, again, on the expanded service level, 787,000 requests, 54,000 funded, 732 not funded. And I believe that's the, oh, well, Stormwater's left. No other questions. I'll move on to Stormwater.
I have one little.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I have one little question on the police EAP, back two slides, I think it was.
Uh, yes, there.
Um, EAP Employee Assistance Program?
Correct.
Explain to me how we are doing it for law enforcement. I'm more worried about all employees. What do we have from a human, you know, becoming, uh, resources aspect for employee assistance program for all employees, not just for police?
Right. And what we have, we do have an EAP program for all employees. And this is a, but what we had discovered was that it needed to be enhanced for, you know, police activities. And so that's what we've done.
Thank you. That just wanted to confirm. I understand special needs for special, uh, aspects, but I wanted to verify that we had something for all employees. Thank you.
I had a question on the next slide with Public Works. The gateway sign landscape maintenance? Is that not being funded because we're not going to have the gateway signs? But if we have them, don't we want to maintain them?
Hoping Michael is still on.
I'm still here. Yes, that's, right now, the landscape contract does not include those sign locations, but when those come online later this year, at some point, that, that will have to be addressed.
Okay.
And I will say this, just because the line item's not in the budget does not mean that it won't occur. That's for a special enhancement. It would be part of the current contract, which was triscapes, we'd expand it, or money's taken from another area of public works to fund that. So the, to answer your question, which was, if the signs are put up, will they be maintained? Absolutely.
Um, and Michael, I know utilities are just so fun to deal with. So what, what does a contracted utility coordinator do?
The, right now, that role or those tasks are being split up among several different people, but they would do everything from issuing permits for work that utilities are doing in the city and they're following up on those permits. They would also coordinate with the utilities on capital projects. To try to, you know, coordinate their relocation. It would be all things utilities that we deal with, which, you know, we're, like I said, we're splitting that up among a few people now, but when we did a comparison of kind of our staffing with some of our neighbors, you know, most cities of our size or bigger have somebody that's really just focused on dealing with the utilities.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Um, this one's, uh, just low level, the entertainment stickers. Um, do we have enough? I, I, that's Richard McLeod probably question I can ask him tonight, I guess. But it seems like a very simple thing, but, um, if we need to have enough, we need to have enough, obviously, because it's in our code, it's a requirement.
Just to let everybody know, on smaller requests, uh, we let departments ask, but a lot of times it's that small enough, it can be covered with an existing fund.
And I'll, I'll expand one more. We have plenty of those stickers.
Right. And also, and also, and also Discover Done Woody, I think, is considering taking it over as part of their branding.
Go to the next slide. I thought I had one thing on the next one. Or we'll go back. Sorry, go back, uh, back. And go back another one, never.
That was the one-time request, is it all?
Never mind. Um, the wayfinding. I, I, I think I'll wait till the CIP conversation. That's fine. All right.
Okay. Anything else? That was all the general fund related requests that we've covered. So, uh, expanded service level, again, 787,000. So Stormwater turned in a couple of requests as well. So for their, uh, same service level, Minnesota Soft and Contract there, uh, the increase related to, to that is $10,000. That is included. Uh, they had one-time request, a perimeter basin master model, master stormwater model, and then a stormwater master plan. Those are both included in the, uh, budget as well. And then their expanded level of service, the contract stormwater project manager and supplies for adopter stream program, those are both included. The contract, uh, stormwater project manager, that is currently paid out of our ARPA one. And those funds will be spent this year, so that is bringing, uh, that in-house.
Hey, Richard, I, I remember my question. There was a, on my item, it said payment for the planning commission ZBA. What was that about? What was that going to be supposedly? What was the answer?
We talked about it at a retreat, I think, about whether or not briefly, we wanted to compensate them. Um, it turns out really nobody seems, very few cities that I could find are doing it. I think we're paying for training, uh, which is the least we can do really, but it's something we can, there's pros and cons and I don't know how the number got that big because the number I was thinking was a lot smaller, but maybe that's for every board. I don't know. We can talk about it at the retreat again if we want. Yeah. Yeah.
So. Sorry, that was it. So, uh, yeah, that was the last slide. So all of the stormwater requests are reflected in the stormwater budget.
We pay for those out of the general budget and not out of their stormwater fund?
We pay for which one?
The stormwater enhancements, the budget enhancement request.
These are being paid out of the stormwater fund.
Oh, okay.
These are all, these last two, these last, this page.
Right.
And the following page are both out of the stormwater.
I just wanted to make sure because that would confuse me.
Sure.
Talk about users. Okay. Um.
So that, those were, all the enhancement requests we received, those were, you have seen what's included and what is not.
Was there also police, uh, officers that were requested?
Sure, yes, there were. I don't, um.
It was in the narrative.
Yeah, I, I have a slide there. Uh, I don't know if I have a slide. It was in the original presentation. Uh, they requested, again, uh, there, there was a total of eight positions that were requested. Three, uh, officers, three CID, uh, CID detectives, one PSR. And there was one budget slash management analyst. So there's a total of eight positions and none, none of those are included in the 2025 budget right now.
And do we know, chief, like where we are now with the vacant, how many vacancies we have? I saw a new officer walk by, but I presume he still has to go to training, correct?
He does.
Academy.
He'll go, um, in two weeks, two weeks from today, he'll start the academy. And then we've got one, uh, we're about to send a conditional offer over to city manager. He'll also go to the academy at the end of the month as well.
Oh, sorry. Let me do this really fast and then I can listen. Multitask, I'm done. Okay, so where are we with vacancies?
So with those two hired, that'll put us at eight.
Still stuck at that ten number.
And, um, right now, we have, uh, six in background and we have two additional testing this week.
Okay. Have we, we feel like we've been, I feel like we've been sitting at 10, and I think some of that was the increase in positions, correct?
Yes.
Are we actively losing officers as well?
No.
Okay. And then how are we doing on our community, um?
Ambassadors.
Ambassadors, thank you.
So we have two that are hired and are trained. We are hoping to get the two vehicles today.
Yes.
If not, hopefully, uh, this week. So you'll see them, uh, start patrolling and, uh, we have several in background.
Okay.
So we have first to fill the additional two.
Okay. Anybody else? But i- if we can get those 10 hired, then you know to start, uh, you have a strategy for the next positions, correct?
Yes, ma'am. In, in following, not only just we need it, but in following with our very down recommendations.
And then the SWAT vehicle is going to be parked here somewhere now, the building for the SWAT vehicle that was in the, where is it now? Where is this?
It's at the, uh, fire station. Right over, yeah, right over the perimeter center.
And that's not just our SWAT vehicle.
No, that is ours.
Okay, so we have a SWAT vehicle, but we don't. So one of the things I understand from talking, listening here and then talking to officers from other places. I'm not saying we need it. Would it be an enhancement to have our own SWAT team so people could have those roles? Or is that too big a lift?
Too big of a lift.
Okay, then I never asked the question. Okay, okay, that's fine. I just was asking. A drone. Okay.
Since we're on the topic of the SWAT vehicle, if I may?
Yes.
Um, where in the city would you want that to be developed? Where, where are we thinking on that?
So this is for the new building. Yeah. We're looking at a couple of different locations, but one location was behind the annex. Although that may not be the favorite location, in my opinion. We're going to look also at Brook Run. We want to check all our percentages and everything on the, remember, there's some restrictions on that property, but I'd like to have that consolidated next to the public works facility we're going to build. That way it's, it's safer, it's easier to get in and out of, it's less, um, environmental impact to the overall community.
I, I tend to agree with you in the sense of Brook Run, in the sense that we are not at our maximum surface level that where you were putting it would be not in green space anyway. And we're all right, might be under construction if we redo the maintenance facility. I would prefer it to be there versus the, right now, we have five acres of trees behind the annex that may tie in someday to perimeter park area. If perimeter park were ever to be developed, that, that five acres might, may or may not be ideal, was at some point thought to be a street, road, buildings back there. But right now, it's five acres of trees. So the Brook Run location would not be taking down trees for this. It would be in, next to our maintenance facility and it would, if the maintenance facility construction at Brook Run includes a new street or a new access point, it might be easier in and out and not impact the park. You know, you're not having a SWAT team go at high speed through the park, right? I mean, so it's an exit there. Might be also centrally located.
It would be a direct access.
Just my thoughts.
Yes. And there maybe had to be some landscaping enhancements, which would be some tree removal and then some beautification of new plannings once that building's complete.
Is it? Okay, thank you, chief. You just keep us posted on what you need. All right. Oh, Stacy or Tom, I can only see Stacy, but I'm assuming Tom is there too.
Um, yeah, no, my questions have been addressed. Thank you.
Okay, Stacy, you're okay? Okay. Do we want to go to capital? Do we need a five-minute break? Yes, we need a five-minute break or 10-minute break. So I don't exactly know the parliamentary way to do this, but a recess for 10 minutes? Is that the?
So that would be at 12:40, reconvene at 12:40, mayor?
Right, so just be back here at 12. I don't know if we have to vote on it or not. Do we have to vote? Just go, just go to the bathroom. I vote. I need a motion to.
Move to recess till 12:45 PM?
12:40, but thank you for starting this. 12:40, 10 minutes. Uh, move by Joe, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. I call the question. All in favor, say aye. All right, we'll be back in 10 or so minutes. All right, we'll be back in ten or so minutes. That's why you don't get breaks. We're here. Got all the pen and stuff. Stacy's back. Is he okay to leave at home? Is he okay to leave at home? Oh, no. Okay, well, all right. I think we're ready. I think we're ready to come back in. All right. Call to order, we're ready.
Okay.
You're gonna show us the C I P stuff, please?
So, so I've got, I've got two slides or two, uh, things I'm gonna show. I put together a list similar for the operating enhancement request. I put together a similar list for C I P. And then what I probably ultimately do is go back into the book. And that was published last Friday or Friday the thirtieth and just kind of walk through each one of those pages to show what the C, five year C I P looks like. So I'll start with a very quick presentation of items that were requested. Let me see, I think I can. So from beginning, hopefully it's being pulled up. Okay, all right. So I'll, uh. I did this by fund as to what was, again, requested. You'll see some of the transportation projects are not in here. Worked with Michael kind of independently to put together some of the transportation related Splo- Sploes projects. But first for Hotemoto, we've already touched on this. The two that are funded, two capital projects that are funded just with twenty twenty-five C I P. Now this, uh, the Astrodun Woody multi-use path is funded for multiple years throughout the C I P. And when we pull up the five-year plan, we'll look at that. But again, this is just focusing on twenty twenty-five. These are the two projects within Hotel Motel that are funded and we previously talked about those. Within Sploes one, uh, as I mentioned, there's a four million dollars above and beyond what's budgeted. Collected forty-seven million, we budgeted forty-three, so we're gonna add the forty-seven million to this. This is, this is everything that's, uh, included just in the twenty twenty of hot budget for Sploes one. You can tell for Public Works, there's four projects that are existing, the first four projects. And then that signal pole replacement is a new project. For police, we've designated a hundred and seventy thousand of it for vehicles. Two hundred and sixty-one thousand for equipment, put aside seven hundred thousand dollars for the SWAT storage building. And then repairs and maintenance of two hundred and thirty-six thousand. So that's the funding that's set aside in Sploes one. Or that makes up the four million dollars and which projects are giving it, sure.
Ask a question. Of course I can ask a question. But, um, but, um, the two items that most puzzled me on the list of, I mean, we don't, when we don't have money, we don't have money. But for Public Works were the adaption to the, uh, ramps, I guess, on Mount Vernon. And then the signal monitoring. That, are those not cons, like, are those considered Sploes eligible or no? And Michael may have to answer. I don't know if he's on here or not.
In my opinion, and we'll let Michael chime in. Jay, did you want, you were reaching forward also, going ahead?
In general, they can fit out of transportation. It's a broad umbrella.
So they both seem pretty important to me. And if we had four million dollars extra from Sploes, maybe there's a way to find it, a possibility. I know that's, this is just something to work on, but it feels like we could, at least between now and the time we vote on this. Look at, go ahead, John.
I would just argue, I would argue for the ADA one.
Okay.
If it makes sense.
Yeah.
Your, the other one is the flashing lights thing, you're about to enter a school zone. Being able to turn those off from City Hall versus once in the beginning of summer going and turning, going, putting your. Guessing your laptop into the box and hitting off, I'm not sure is worth the juice, you know.
I think it's expensive too, but it is super annoying and it's gonna be, the calendar is more broken up. So it's twelve times a year they gotta go turn this thing on and off.
Again, yeah, I guess because with all the week breaks and winter break and Thanksgiving break, I, that's a lot of manpower.
Yeah, maybe I was thinking they wouldn't do it at every break. I was thinking summer only, but again, I'm just trying to figure out if it makes sense for that dollar amount, that's all.
And the Mount Vernon way ADA, this is back to Michael Smith, uh, conversation is, I'm sure you've got an inventory of what's lacking citywide. Uh, so I'm sure there's a priority.
At a hundred and, I maybe misunderstood, a hundred and sixty thousand for one? No, for the whole corridor. Well, then you would knock one out, like if this is.
Well, I'd be curious, Michael Smith, to see where we are citywide with that.
Okay.
You know, where the gaps are. It's more than this meeting, though, maybe an adjustment.
Go ahead, Rob.
I guess the, the question I would have, and this is a bigger issue because it's on the agenda tonight as well, is we have a big chunk of money set aside for a bridge. That I would be shocked is if it's ready to spend in twenty twenty-five.
So is it okay to talk about that now?
Absolutely. And, and one thing, mayor, on this particular list, it's on the screen. The items y'all, y'all talking about those two items. Staff can sharpen their pencil and come up. You, you, these are round numbers. Nothing ends up in round numbers.
Right.
They can sharpen their pencil and accommodate those two items, but the other one is fair game to talk about as well.
But that item is, um. That, those items that should come out of Sploes and not general, and maybe that was the plan to begin. Like we should push everything we can to Sploes and not general. Okay. Is Michael Smith here? Okay. I'm having, I have a weird window on my. We can't see him, okay. Yeah, you can do the generic list. Okay, that's fine. Right, that's fine.
Okay, either way.
Right, go ahead.
Um, sure. Uh, so in Sploes two, these are all the projects that have funding in twenty twenty-five. Again, we talked about a couple of these, two point seven five million for road resurfacing. Uh, there's a list of projects. I won't read them each one to you, but I, hopefully everybody can read those list of projects. And then at the bottom is the Shambly Dunwoody Bridge for one penny eight million, million dollars, yes. And when everybody's done reading, I can flip to the next page. Okay. Um, and then police, uh, they've identified seven hundred thousand dollars for vehicles. There, the in-car camera system replacements is the, um, well, I think that kind of speaks for itself as well. And then police equipment, they've identified four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of equipment. We didn't list each individual one here. I don't think y'all need to see it. We'll prioritize with police, um, working down that money. Park Green Trace Recreation, we, we set aside money just so the budget is there, doesn't necessarily mean that there's identified spend. I just put the budget in place as that portion of the referendum, they do get a portion of it that goes there. And then to repairs and maintenance, both parks and facilities is getting about forty-one thousand dollars. And I believe, oh, uh, the last one was the General Capital Project. So, uh, I T, we talked about new laptops and desktops for a hundred thousand, host and sands for a hundred and twenty thousand. And then the six hundred thousand for general capital repair and improvement. That's year three of that. And I believe that was in the last slide. So, uh, oh, well, I, I guess I, oh, I know what I did. I'm confusing myself, sorry. Um, I'm also gonna go through what was requested. And show you what is, uh, included in the budget and what wasn't included in the budget. And this will span the full two thousand twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine C I P. So total capital projects that were requested were about two point one million dollars. We included one point three million and did not include eight hundred and a little bit over eight hundred and fifty thousand. And, um, so these were all the requests and whether they were funded or in what year they were funded. So for example, uh, information technology, the council chambers upgrades, audio video upgrades to this room. We originally worked with about eighty thousand. Having talked to Ginger, that might actually be a little bit more. We have an end for twenty twenty-six to do that. And if we wait until twenty twenty-six, it might cost a little bit more than eighty thousand dollars. So I might have to tweak the, the next version that you see for that. New Host and Sands, we've got in a hundred and twenty thousand for twenty twenty-five. I, I work with Ginger. I think she might need something in twenty twenty-six as well. And then we might be able to skip twenty twenty-seven, but she'd like something in twenty twenty-eight. And the new laptops and desktops, we're basically just trying to establish a program. So a hundred thousand dollars set aside every year, uh, for the laptops and desktops. So, um, for facilities, we did not include anything for the build out of the M R I space. Uh, in this budget, so, um, that might be something we want to look at. For, um, police, we included, uh, nine vehicles I've talked about for approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. A E D battery placements, that's in their equipment budget. The one thing we did not include, um, was a, a. Flock O S A drone basically for police. That's almost rounding up three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. That's an annual cost. So the first year we could, and chief, please correct me if I say anything incorrectly here. That is the, uh, the first year we could absorb that within Sploes as we buy the drone and put it in place, so to speak. But each year after that, we pay to operate it. It would be within the operating fund of, uh, it would be within the general fund. So you're looking at a three hundred thousand dollar hit to the general fund for that particular drone. We have one in place, I believe, right now. We're testing it if I'm not mistaken.
Block actually installed a drone, but they went away from the program. So Aerodome is the one that they are partnering with now. Brookhaven just did a demo on it. They have a one point three million dollar budget for their flock program. They are switching to the Aerodome, which is work in conjunction with the real-time crime center. Not cheap.
So, so that's not in the budget and not in the, uh, C I P at the moment. Let's see here. So I listed out everything that is police equipment related. I, I don't, if you have questions, we can go through it. But, uh, as I said, we will work with police. They've, about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in their police equipment budget. This is a lot of the items that they were going to, uh, purchase, use for that equipment, uh, with that budget. So a- again, I won't read each one unless you have a question. If not, I'll continue to go on because I think there's another slide of all of their equipment. So, um, and again, it's all included as part of their twenty twenty-five, uh, C I P budget. So all of these will be, uh, items that they've prioritized and will use their equipment budget for. And, uh, we're still going on police, top three. So within, uh, parks, they had some requests. Brook Run Multi-Use Field Enhancements is not in there. We did include the Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center HVAC Replacements. And then we had a couple of requests for Donald Spanish Reform Lawn Pavers, Baseball Field Net Extensions. And Stage Door Theater Risers and Carpet that are currently not in the budget right now. So again.
What's the H V A C, HVAC replacement, which, which, which part of the building is that one in? It's. It's everything but the library, I guess.
I thought we did that because we talked about how the library was not our responsibility. Drove me nuts.
I'll, uh, I'll get with Rachel.
Okay.
To, uh, I'll get somebody to make a note of that question. I'll get.
And someone, she's probably around. You'll get an answer, okay?
And I believe that was the last slide. So on a very high level, that's what's in the twenty twenty-five C I P budget. As well as all the enhancement requests that were received and what's funded and not funded. So the only, uh, other suggestion, uh, suggestion, only other presentation I have again are the five-year C I P schedules in the book. And I'd be happy to open up those and we can take a look at those as needed as well.
No, I, I just had a couple of questions on this stuff.
Go ahead.
Um, with the, I guess this is really a question to Eric. If we're not going to put any money in the budget to build out the MRI space, what are we going to use it for?
Now, that, that's basically, once we acquire, re-acquire the space, in fact, then we will evaluate, you know, what condition the space is in. And we will, we'll, um, we do have some facilities money that we can come up with for design and then look at the allocation. Part of the initial thought from staff was to use it for people that come and go out of the building a lot. So I mean, reallocation of some of the other cubicles within the second floor of the building. We try to make it where it has more people that, you know, coming and going. Jay has more.
The main thing doing is retrofitting it after they move out. But in the short term, if we don't retrofit it, we can make use of the space. It just won't be optimized.
And then my next question. And it's perfect. The slide is up here. A lot of this stuff for the parks, they, that is not done, but correct me if I'm wrong with this, with the $160,000 in SPOLOST for parks wasn't allocated. So theoretically, I mean, so what, what's the idea with the 160 that's not allocated versus these unfunded requests? And how does that work?
I need to look at the referendum to see, Jay, do you recall the referendum, how that, that park green space?
I'm actually going to send it to y'all, but I'll, I'll kind of verbalize it too. The, talk in the SPOLOST portion, correct? For SPOLOST two, let me make sure.
No, my, my question is there's $160,000 allocated in SPOLOST for parks. These are unfunded park requests. So are they going to get allocated to this? Or what is the general thought process and how we're going to spend that $160,000 that's in the budget for SPOLOST?
Let me ask, sidebar, we heard you on this, the 160 was general fund requested, not funded, right?
Though, well, so in SPOLOST two, we, we have a certain percentage that can go toward parks, green space.
One percent.
160, yes, 1% of, I had 162,000 listed in the 2025 budget, but no real.
Any of these could be used for that. So, any of these could be used.
And, and I'm comfortable also, again, we could prioritize with Rachel. So the 600,000 that we set aside each year as well from the, uh, Schallford Road proceeds, if if there's a prioritization of those projects and these rise to the top, so to speak, then maybe we could possibly work with her to fund some of those as well.
So in other words, these are not a definite, no, they're just not in the 2025 budget. They're just still out there waiting to see the ebb and flow.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, John, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. Um, Richard, is there, I'm looking at the contingency or is there 1.7 in capital that's still unallocated?
So that is correct. So that 1.7 from the Schallford proceeds, if you recall, we, uh, did a million and a half for the, um, Brookrun Maintenance Facility, a million dollars for Parfitt Peachtree Middle School, did 3 million across five, um, uh, 600,000 a year for five years, for a total of $3 million for general capital repairs and maintenance. And then the remaining 1.7 is listed as contingency within Fund 350, the General Capital Project.
All right. So we have that. Um, I'm going to circle back on something that you didn't mention. Chief, if you got a second. There is the funding that you receive from time to time on forfeitures. It doesn't come up very often, but it does come up from time to time. And I know you have the ability to spend that on a number of items. Is there, since we're talking budget and police items that were not being funded, do you have any idea on what's happening with that funding stream? Or what would you spend the money on if it were to come in?
So we've actually received several, uh, significant seizures lately. Um, I am waiting on the updated, uh, sheet from Dawn. She, she puts it together. We have to do an annual report, uh, that we report to the state every year. There are actually some items that I have requested through the SPOLOST 2025 budget that I'll actually, I'll probably have in my 24 budget as well. Any type of, uh, necessary equipment or items that come up. Yeah, we, that is an option. We've used, uh, our asset forfeiture, uh, for several expenditures, a couple this year. Um, but it is an option for us to, um, you know, to base on the, the needs and the demands that we're going to have for that.
Yeah, typically council doesn't get in your business when it comes to that, but I would take for granted that since you've already asked for funding on a number of items, it would be a priority enough for yourself and for the department that you would go in the future when that forfeit F comes back, that you would probably be asking for these. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So you're not, so you may or may not be putting drone at the top of the list. So.
You know, we also have, um, the Dunwoody Police Foundation, which, um, has been a huge supporter, um, for us, uh, for equipment and training as well.
Okay, just, I wanted to remind council that we have that funding as well. That does not come up very often, but it is something.
Good question about that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So let, let's say that you buy, you get the forfeiture money and it's how much like as an annual year?
It, it varies.
So what's a range kind of?
So our last seizure was over a hundred thousand and that was just one seizure.
Okay.
At one home here.
But we would not have to ever know if you bought a sniper optic and mount, correct? Like you just, you can use that money, correct?
Correct. I mean, I would.
Right, so you buy it.
Lady manager in the.
Right, they would know, but we would not have to know what you clear from this list. If it's under $50,000 or whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was just curious because I hadn't thought about that money in a long time.
It wasn't mentioned in any of the budget aspects, but yet we are, there's police funding requests that are not being met. It was another funding stream that I remembered that does come from time to time. It's not, it's not something you ever budget because you can't take that for granted. That's going to come your way, but it is something we see from time to time.
Um, okay, uh, questions, comments? Do you want to do the five-year plan first? Go ahead and do the five-year thing and then we can talk.
Let me, uh, work with Ryan, get this pulled up. Okay, Ryan, I've got it on page, if you can pull it up. Can everybody see that?
Not yet.
Let me see if I page up and down. Can everybody?
We can see it enough.
Yeah.
Right?
Ryan, can you go to page 48? Yeah, I don't know how this is going to come across. Yeah.
Okay. Just y'all read it and who, let me know if question. Where, is it in the bud, is this a budget page?
Yes, yes, it's in our budget. It's in the budget book. Yeah, 48. This starts the Hotel Motel Fund. Yes.
The actual page number, not necessarily the PDF page number.
That looks a little better. It is page Y, 48. I got it. Not sure I can actually read this either, right? Okay. Oh, I found it. Open, can't make it any bigger on my computer either.
Trying to. So for the Hotel Motel Fund, this is, as we discussed earlier, these are the funds that remain in the fund itself after we pay ourselves and Discover Dunwoody. So this is that 18% that remains in the fund. We're forecasting out for the years. As you can tell, um, the majority of the funds, uh, are going toward Ashford Dunwoody Phase Two in this fund. Um, so how you read this is there's a prior year budget and then there's a, a, a current year budget, if you want to call it that. That's the fiscal year 2024 column. And then 25 to 329 is the proposed budget. So you'll see a total budget there and that encompasses all, uh, prior year, that encompasses all years, basically, all prior year plus the current year, plus the five-year CIP. And then just as a reference point, we show what's been spent through June 30th. And again, that's all years as well. So it shows a remaining budget in the far right column. Again, keeping in mind that is all years and, and that schedule there. So, uh, that's why Ashford Dunwoody shows almost $8 million in remaining, uh, for that project. So.
Richard, can you do that one more time really slowly? So I'm looking at the top set, just orientation. The top few rows, you've got a total right column is 6.5 million?
The years, look at the years of funding's coming in.
Right, right, right. Total.
Yes, so that's the revenue side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's the.
And then I'm trying to foot that 6.5 million down here on the bottom under total expenditures.
So on the revenue side, and I should have, uh, I should have added in the prior year revenue. I just, I didn't add it in on schedule. So, uh.
But it's every, but, so everything on this page though, does reflect just Hotel Motel Fund.
Correct.
Expenditures.
Correct, yes. Yes. This is just the Hotel Motel.
Got it.
I don't know if I can page, you can, if you look at the years, so the revenue side, uh, and the expense side at the bottom, ignoring the prior year budget, all the years tie out. So you can see how, uh, the revenue coming in and the expenditures at the bottom now. Sorry, I had it covered up. So.
Can someone remind me why the PCMS football field lights, which I thought we already had there?
We funded them originally with Hotel Motel.
Okay, okay, that's.
That's the reason it's on that.
But they've already been paid for.
Yes.
Zero.
Oh, I see. No, I don't see, but I believe you.
If you look at the far right of that project, there's zero remaining.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Again, tying out a total, more information than you did, I will grant you that, but I wanted to show what we've done in the past as well, just so you have a feel for it.
So I brought this up in our one-on-one. Um, I'm curious to know, you know, the Hotel Motel Fund is coming from our hotels and the hotels are represented by the Board of Discover Dunwoody. And I'm curious to know what their feedback is on their use of this funds and what are their thoughts if we've presented this to them?
Meaning asking Discover Dunwoody how they'd like to use these capital dollars or how?
As.
How they use their.
As the business representatives of the, or origin of these funds.
Yeah, but let me correct that the only authorizing body for this funding for spending is the city council. It is, it is, at that point, it is Hotel Motel dedicated for a specific source. Your approval is what matters.
But when we, we raised the taxes at their request to put in stuff, and this came from their survey, like most of this, I mean, the football lights, who knows, but the, um, the path stuff for sure, the visitors were saying they needed somewhere safe to, if I remember that survey, it was before the pandemic. But they did a really good job. Like they sat people at the MARTA station and in the hotel lobbies. And that's, that's why they ra, agreed to raise the taxes to the max. And this is what they wanted to spend it on, was that kind of stuff. Go ahead. Rob, did you have a question? Oh, and then, but I wanted to show, is it okay if I share something right now? From Michael Starling, which is sort of builds on this for the hotels, maybe what you're asking. Can you share the one that's called maybe placemaking?
Ryan or Ginger, if you're back there? They're, they're doing that, see it.
Okay. All right. So this, if you can't read it, it says all the projects in the placemaking plan were taken directly from previously approved plans and meet the definition of tourism product development, which is the creation or expansion of physical attractions which are available and blah, 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 open to the public, improve destination appeal to visitors and are used by and support the visitor's experience. Okay, can we go to the next page, please? So phase one, this shows you what was in the phase one of this plan. So you see what's complete. And then what is, like, we're already constructing the gateway signs. Uh, phase two of the Ashford Dunwoody trail, which I very much would like to see started when the first phase finishes. If you sit at our meetings and you get distracted and you look outside in the evenings, there are a lot of people walking right here. Like it's got to be the busiest stretch of sidewalk and riding downhill and, um, and it's should be the least controver, you know, this, over here, the improvement should be not so controversial and we can get them done. Like without much things. And so this is phase one. And then if you can go to the next page. And then these are phase two, um, you know, the High Street Trail. Michael's not in here, Starling. Michael Smith, do you know about these or do we need Starling?
I, I know about most of them.
So the High Street Trail, is some of that being built by the improvements of the developers?
Yes, that was, um, to connect Primus Center Parkway over to Cott. So the part, actually the part in Dunwoody is being, is done by High Street. The other part would go into Sandy Springs.
So we're doing it, or High Street's doing our part and we don't have, we can suggest that Sandy Springs do their part, right?
Yeah.
Or Cox.
Yes.
But there's no more funding needed for that from us or is there?
No, uh, not unless we wanted to try to do something over into the mall property to, you know, connect it more directly into the mall property. But the part on the Sandy Springs side of Prim, or the High Street side is done.
Okay, that's pretty cool. What about connectivity from Campus 244? Oh, here comes Michael. He must have been listening. What about connectivity from Campus 244 to High Street?
Yes, that's, that's something that the CID is working on right now. They, they've got a designer looking at how we can make that happen. It's probably going to require some right of way from another property owner. But that, that's in the works.
Okay. So Michael Starling, since you're here, and since we're talking about Hotel Motel, I hope y'all will humor me. Of these projects, because it sounds like some of these are underway, the ones that are not completed. Is there one or two that we would need to financially contribute to that are the priority, you think?
Well, the, you know, we went through an entire study.
Right.
If you remember with the city and, and Discover Dunwoody. And so they created three different priority lists and you have phase one and two in front of you. Um, other, you know, it was, it was obvious that the park was number one. That's done. And Ashford Dunwoody Road Trail was, was number two. After that, you know, a, all of them are, are pretty important. I think the biggest issue is having enough funds.
Right.
To get them, to get them done.
Can we go back to page one, please? Or not pa, the first phase?
Yep.
Okay. So I don't know when's the right time to talk about a park at the Dunwoody MARTA Station, but I was in Shambly next to the MARTA Station the other day. It's really noisy.
Yeah, and I think, I think we had, we had sort of transitioned that from a park into a trail connection.
To get across.
So the idea would be that you, you know, you're, you're having High Street developed on one side. You've got the mall on the other. What you want to do is connect across those and through them. So it really wouldn't park. That's what it was called in the, in the plan, but that's not what the vision really would be. It'd be more of a trail.
Side question, is there an opportunity for stormwater storage at that location if we made it a water retention type park?
That's what it is now.
That is what it is now. Okay, just, I'm trying to feed off that as well.
Michael Starling, where are we with funding for the second phase of the Ashford Dunwoody Road Trail?
Yeah, Smith would.
I mean, Michael Smith, I'm so sorry.
Well, the, to get it up to City Hall, the estimate, it, it's going to take all the funding that's budgeted through 2027 to have the full funding for that. So I think that's, we have a little bit of money for the Campus 244 connection and some of these other things to kind of keep them going, but really, really all the money in the fund is needed to try to advance the next phase of Ashford Dunwoody Phase Two.
Okay, so the money is budgeted already for that?
Right, it, right, through 2027.
Okay, uh, John.
What happens when the build out of the barbecue place and all of the, uh, the, the other restaurant that's just turning over and the, the sushi restaurant? All of that has been turned over, redeveloped. At what percentage do they then put in the trail for us?
I, I don't remember exactly what's in the code, but I know if it's, if it's just a tenant or remodel or interior remodel, that typically doesn't trigger having to do the improvements. It would be, you know, a major expansion or, or like down at the mall where they built a new restaurant.
Right. I'm just remembering just a couple of office build outs on perimeters, um, around the village there required that developer to redo the twelve foot path or something. So I'm just trying to remember at what percentage does a build out or the redevelopment of the various shopping centers add up to the percentage that requires the owner or the developer to do upgrades?
Yeah, I think it may be, at one time it was different from the village than it was other places and the threshold was lower. I think that threshold is higher now. But it still may be different than perimeter. I, we'd have to look in the code.
Okay. I just wondered from that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
So I've got the, the, I've got a few other questions on the Ashford Dunwoody Trail, but let's, let's go higher level here and talk about, um, triggers for revenue bond. And whether it's against SPOST or Hotel Motel tax, because we see, I, uh, Michael Smith, what I'd like to hear is, um, find out more about is these are the numbers, but we need to tell the story and the status of each of these roadway projects when we, whether it's, whether it's in Hotel Motel or it's SPOST.
One second. Will you change this out to what we were looking at before? Right. That's what you're working off of, correct?
Yeah, go back to the spreadsheet. Look, so what, what I, I look at these numbers and then this is very, very complicated as we know about dealing with public works. And when we're talking about utility relocation right away, and then when construction actually happens and we look at these revenue streams of these buckets incrementally being filled, pay as you go. And then of course adding inflation and so on and so forth. So, um, I'd like to be able to hear a story and the status of each of these projects that are listed in this five year capital project. And to say, well, did, could we, why don't we, can we start right away acquisition on day one, right after we approved a concept plan if we got a million dollars in the bank? And, and when does utility? Because it seems that's kind of opaque to us on council. Eventually we find out about things. Where are we getting to construction ready? Right? And then, and then layered on that is if it's possible, because I remember the, the Astrid Dunwoodie Trail, we, we approved that concept plan in twenty twenty, four years ago, and that was estimated at ten million dollars. And even if you look at this estimate through FY twenty twenty nine, we've got eight point two. So that's not even going to happen, uh, in, in this. And then we hear anecdotally that the perimeter CID has money that they may contribute, but I don't see that budgeted here of what that would look like. And how quick, you know, could we break this down into further segments? I, I know you talked about that phasing even more from, uh, perimeter center west up to another intersection and then up to another place and so forth. So I know that's truly literally the critical path about the Astrid Dunwoody multi-use path, uh, phase two, but I'd like to hear more about that. Where are we with the right of way with acquisition, with utility reload? When is construction ready? And then again, if it's, if it's construction ready and we don't have the funds, could we revenue bond it against SPOST or Hotel Motel to see that come to fruition? Does CID have the money that we could, we could do things sooner rather than later?
The, uh, the critical path is for, for the phase two is right of way and funding. You know, if we, if we had all the right of way this year, we don't have all the funding. And then I guess you could look at how to, to put that funding together. But we don't have all the right, we're in the process of talking to the property owners along the corridor and trying to get the right of way. But right now, you know, based on the way right of way discussions went on phase one, hopefully it won't be that long, but these are out of town corporate owners. So getting their attention, especially when you're asking for donations can take some time. So I would say right now, right of way and funding is on the critical path and they're probably both going to realistically come to fruition around the same time. I mean, it's, it's probably going to take at least a year or more, a year is probably on the optimistic end to get those right of way agreements secured. And then that'll be about the time that the funding is coming in.
So Michael, thanks for the question. This is more back to Eric then. Eric, is this a staffing concern about? We are asking too much of our staff because we have a lot of projects in flight that they've got to coordinate right of way acquisition. Or is, is perimeter CID, their board owns the properties? Eric, if perimeter CID owns these properties, their board members are property owners. Uh, I heard, you know, they approved their own trail plan. They have their own trail plan that they approved. And, and, and we, we approved this plan four years ago. Now we're looking at potentially five years after approving a concept plan, we might have the right of way. And, and I would go, I'm just one of seven. If we, I'd like to see how much CID has gonna contribute to this. And then if we can do it, if it's ready for construction, I would, I would, I would support a revenue bond if we, if we have everything of all we need is money. So I'm just, I'm, I'm a bit, you know, I hate to say the word disappointed in saying it takes five years from approving a concept plan to get the right of way. I know we have fu- funding, but I want to make sure that we've got the CID funding and if we need a revenue bond, if that's all we need is funding and we have the revenue stream dedicated. At the beginning of twenty twenty, we were set aside, we had considered, we were before the pandemic to consider revenue bond to, to do this. So I, I, yeah.
Yeah. And so, so there are a lot of variables with, with the questions and I understand the frustration. The, um, you know, you asked about the staffing, one thing, you know, we're a lean staff. You know, we don't have, we don't have everything that we do, we have to hire out as far as right of way acquisition and different things. We've got a great, um, relationship with the CID. And from that standpoint, with the hotels and then, you know, Michael Starling and his crew, they deal a lot with the businesses here. So we do a great job on acquiring land as it, as it comes about. The other thing that, one thing that Councilman Henigan asked about a moment ago was talking about, say, the shopping center next door. And I'll go one block further down where the public sits now. You know, when that totally redeveloped, different story. Yes, they'll come in same in front of the Yellow Dog Restaurant and in front of the mall. You know, that took a long time to negotiate. A lot of, you know, rates are involved, different out of town owners are involved. So those things take place. One thing I'll say too, on the revenue bond aspect, when we looked at that years ago, interest rates were a lot different than they are today. I mean, than they are today. They were much, much lower. So much of your money gets taken for by, through interest on a bond. We want to look at the timing of when that type of structure is appropriate. There are other funding options, of course, bonds and different things of that nature. But the main thing is this is, and that's when I spoke to Michael Smith last week and he generated a memo. I'm glad to distribute that to y'all, which were very specific questions about the, about the trail. And, you know, wanting to know when that is going to come about, how everything's going there. And he's answered some of those today. You've alluded to some of those questions today as well. But I believe at the end of the day, the, the right of way is the most complicated and time consuming portion of it. Second, you have the utility relocations as we experienced deeply in Georgetown, and we're doing that anywhere in the Dunwoody area. So many utilities, it's a blessing and a curse from that standpoint. We're fortunate that we have those services in the ground, but it's also very difficult to work through that. The, um, one thing I'll say is this, and this is off on a tangent a little bit, the Public Service Commission should work with us more closely on utility relocation, holding the utility owners' feet to the fire more closely, everywhere from Georgia Power to the cable companies, to fiber companies and things of that nature. That's an issue. So all that being said, it is a slow process that my best recommendation for y'all is at some point in the future, uh, have a very specific bond for the perimeter area would be the best way to fund that. I would do, I would just do a, a, uh, tax bond on that. The revenue, but there's not enough revenue, I don't believe, Jay, coming in from Hotel Motel. It's better as you pay as you go has been the staff's opinion there. And Jay, you may want to.
There is a ability to, to bond a Hotel Motel tax. It would be a smaller issue, it'd be the eight to ten million dollar issue right now. Couldn't recommend anything at today's interest rates, especially with recent Fed actions. And also everything on a bond needs to be immediately like you dig the next day. Because if not, what you're doing is actually increasing the cost of what you're building. So instead of a dollar per mile, it becomes a dollar twenty per mile and you actually get less out of it if you issue bonds.
And what, what about, again, I love our perimeter CID, they're great partners and so on. They just wrote a check, I think it was somewhere between six and eight million dollars to Sandy Springs for their build out of the trail on Petri Dunwoody. So with this total funding and, uh, and whether it's with Michael Smith, where we divide this up, can, how to eat an elephant one bite at a time. So do we want to further phase this out? Do we want to try to do right of way all the way up to Mount Vernon? Do we want to just do it to the Ashford Center Parkway, right? What can be more achievable and, and see things come to fruition sooner with, with CID's funding as well?
Well, and that's an excellent question. So the, the goal was to go up to perimeter center Parkway and then turn there and head towards the village in that direction. And so that's, that's the plan there. And what we can do, and Michael, if you want to elaborate more, either Michael, whichever one has the best expertise on the CID, because that's a very important element to see where they are with their funding. I know in speaking to Ann Hammond as early as last week, you know, their board, I also spoke to one of their board members, they want to see a lot more in the perimeter area, which is the CID. I'll call it that. They want to see more there. So I think from that standpoint, Michael may want to elaborate, Michael Smith, on that just slightly more.
Yeah. I mean, they've been committed to this project for half. And when I, so when I say funding in twenty twenty seven, that, that assumes half of the funding coming from the CID to, to fully fund the project. And I think, you know, for some amount of money, if, if they would have to talk to their board, but I think at the staff level, the discussion has been that if we get to a point where we're ready to go and we're a little bit short, the CID would maybe consider fronting some of the money. Um, but the right of way has to be acquired first before that can really happen.
Okay. So thanks, Michael. This is good information. So we're saying maybe, maybe twenty twenty seven, even though right now in our SPOST, it shows that cash flows through twenty twenty nine on that project. So you're saying maybe, maybe by twenty twenty seven?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm saying by twenty twenty seven, there should be enough funding in the account based on today's estimate to, to build the project.
And maybe, maybe even if we have the continued, continued cash flow, if we just need a couple more years of that Hotel Motel tax to fund it all. You're saying maybe the CID could maybe help float that bridge it for a little bit and then we could maybe pay them back?
Yes.
So, okay. All right, great. And, and then again, thanks. That's really, that, that was the biggest question I had about this one, because again, we have the CID where it's, we're so blessed to have them as a partner. It's a complicated project. There's a lot of right of way, a lot of things to do there. It'll be, uh, but it'll be, yeah, it's a tough one, but yeah. But in general, also though, the other higher level question was just in regards to the, the projects that we're really probably going to see here sooner rather than later that, that are like, are, like, say, maybe within, where, say, I say twenty four months out before construction starts or something, whereas we get closer in, where are we really with these projects? Um, like for instance, the, uh, you know, some, a couple of things I saw, just for example, was the, um, the, uh, da, 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 da. Well, I'll wait, I'll wait till we move on. I'll have other questions on the, on the pre-trail. So we'll move on project.
Okay. I have a question, specific question for Michael and then, and I guess that's all. Michael Starling, I'm sorry, there's just a lot of Michaels. The, the dumb, the big Dunwoody sign.
Yep.
Sorry, because it's a quarter mil, I think that's a quarter million dollars here, right?
That's what we estimated at the time.
And are we any closer to finding a home for it?
So the, so the problem is, is we're, we're trying to make that sign do two different things.
Right.
We want it to be a gateway sign so people who drive by see it.
Right.
But it's designed to actually be a, a interactive, it's a swing, but it, but it's for photos. So it's an Instagrammable. That's, that's what the, that's what it is. And with a sixty foot long sign, you have to find property where people can be far enough away to actually take a picture and get Dunwoody in it. And we have not been able to find a location that does those two things. If you find a good location, the sign fits, the people would have to be in the street to take a, a, a photo or across the street. And so we're, we've been very uncomfortable with, with, with doing, with doing that. So we're still looking.
Okay.
Um, Astrid Dunwoody is very difficult. Um, there are some other locations around perimeter and it has been, I mean, right now, we're only looking at perimeter because we, we did talk about a few other locations that the council really didn't think, you know, like we shouldn't put it in a park. That was our.
No, we cannot put it in a park.
And so we're still looking.
Okay.
And Mayor, I'm sorry. The other sign, tell me about the sign that's going in too now. There's one under, underway right now.
There is one underway. So, um, the first gateway sign and Smith will, might be able to talk more about the timing, but in front of the Marriott along the, before you get to the bridge, or as you, if you're coming from Brookhaven or Sandy Springs, over the bridge, that big retaining wall, there's a, that's going to be the first, and it's actually going to be hung on the wall itself. And it is, it's massive. I drove by and they were, they had the D and it, it is, it's a giant.
Wasn't the other big one in front of Ravinia as they were coming down Shambly Dunwoody? What's the status?
There'll be, there'll be one there. I mean, they're obviously located, the first two, uh, will go, the first, um, horizontal sign will go on Shambly Dunwoody Road. So when that whole gateway project is done, that will sort of be the finish. And then, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be the, the, the vertical. The, the other one is, is horizontal, of course. And then once that's done, they will start installing the rest of, I think, thirteen or, or sixteen.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we're still looking for the swing sign.
Okay. At, at some point, it doesn't even have to be today, but at some point, a discussion of when prod, like what procedurally we do if projects aren't going to happen. Like, I don't know, I can't give an example, but maybe a six, whatever. Okay. Thank you. Richard.
That's a, that's a tomato fund. Three more to go. So.
Sorry.
So.
At least we're interested.
Richard McLeod, did you come down to answer the question about what triggers the?
Build out.
Build out? I figured you guys are all just listening to us up there and you wandered down.
I'm sorry. Read the question.
What triggers, if, if, like next door was the example? Like they're going to redo three restaurants in a whatever period. What triggers a contribution to infrastructure?
Uh, it's a percentage of the total cost of construction as terms of the value of the property. So if they get there, they have to, uh, contribute. So. But it's a little funky because they take the tax value and, um, that's different than the market value. So, um, yeah, it's, it's a little fishy.
I mean, three big parcels are being redeveloped on that property. There's only one other big parcel. I guess it's the, uh, the hardware store. At what point in the future are, is, are the changes in the, the, the changes that are happening now? Over time, what if the harbor freight goes? Does that get added into the previous? What's the, what's the cutoff? When's the, what's the time span?
I'll have to look it up to see exactly what, uh, yeah.
I, I looked it up while we were sitting here, um, and for the perimeter, if it's a new structure or the existing structure is increased in size by more than fifty percent. Or if the parking.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Or if the parking is increased by more than, or revised by more than fifty percent. Those, those are the thresholds for perimeter.
Yeah. So they would have to expand by fifty percent.
Okay. Again, I remember Dunwoody Village, it's changing a couple of offices, forced a new sidewalk or new path or new something. So I was taking for granted that might be the same in perimeter, but it's not. You have to, you have to tear down the building or increase the size of the building and that's not happening anywhere on the property next door.
That's correct.
Okay. Just thank you. Just trying to understand what we do, how we do it.
Okay. But that was Hotel Motel Fund. So next, and I'm, hopefully this works as planned. So, gosh.
Wait, where is it?
Next is a SPOST one, and hopefully that showed up on your screen.
It did.
Okay. Yes, it's page fifteen. Yes. Thank you. Uh, and this will be, it'll cover two pages. Um, so this is the exact same format as, um, Hotel Motel. So prior year budget, current year twenty twenty four budget, and then the twenty five to twenty nine, the out years budget. Obviously SPOST one, no more collections in it. Uh, so as you can tell by the top there, this one I did fill in all the prior year information. So the top, you can see where we collected forty seven million. fill in all the prior year information. So the top, you can see where we collected $47 million. That's why we're putting to work the the $4 million. So again, the total budget column, total budget for all years since the project's been in existence, the actual to date is through June 30th. That's the amount we spent since the project inception, basically. And then you get a remaining budget as well out there. And so the the numbers that are highlighted, the 2025 budget is highlighted in each one of those columns there, and we kind of walked through that previously. I can, I can flip onto the next page because that gets into a lot of police stuff. There's more transportation on, oops, let me see. Yeah, there we go. So this is the rest of transportation, and then police starts at the bottom and carries over actually to the next page, and then you got repairs and maintenance after that. Be happy to answer any questions on these.
Michael Smith, can you give me a quick update on the Womack Cambridge to Vermac? I believe that's just a sidewalk. Is that eight feet? Is that, what's the width on that? What is that?
Yes, that is just a sidewalk, six feet wide. It's filling a gap between Cambridge and Vermac.
Womack, right.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, I'll finish this one off. Let's see, we'll go to the next page. Oops, sorry.
I'm sorry, this is kind of like a procedural question, too. So is there a space where you finish, when a project's finished, if we didn't spend all the budget? Is there a space where that money goes, a place?
So if you recall, at the end of each year, we come at roughly November timeframe, we come back to council with a project closeout agenda item, and that's when we were asked to close out completed projects, and if there is a remaining budget, we will propose suggestions for where to move that money to. So yes, once a year, we do try to close out projects.
And I'm presuming on the Georgetown Gateway Project bills just haven't come in invoices or something. It's like it's showing, we budgeted $700,000 for paving, road resurfacing, and it's showing that it all remains. So there's clearly some lag here, which is fine. I'm just.
I think your actuals were were through June, weren't they? Correct, yes.
They had paid in June.
Yeah, yeah, well, yes. That one, and Michael Smith and I have talked about that one. We actually coded majority of the paving paving to the Georgetown project within the General Capital Project Fund. And so we're we're going to propose a reclass to move the expense out of that account to this account. So and Michael Smith, please correct me if I said something wrong there, but we've got a plan for that money, yes.
So, Richard, from a readability perspective, there's plus one and plus two.
Correct.
And some projects continue.
Correct.
Some projects don't.
Correct.
Right? So do we happen to have like a checkbox of which ones are finished? And that would be just plus one, I guess. Do we see what's all finished and what's not in plus two? Do we imply, I basically say, if I don't see it in plus two, then I guess it's
So we try to keep the project numbers the same. So if you see, and I'll take the very first line as an example, if you see SP1-1817 in Splosh1 and Splosh2, then that means it's continuing over into Splosh2. If you see a new project, we tried to designate Splosh2 with SP24 to designate the year that Splosh2 started. So if you see projects that are SP24, that's a brand-new Splosh2 project. If you see an SP1, that's a continuation of the project.
Oh, nice. Smart coding. I like it.
Sometimes we trick ourselves, fool ourselves, yes.
Just, Michael Smith, just a quick question on the Womack sidewalk. Is that $500,000 budgeted? Is that going to complete the project and actually going to be done in 2025? Because I know I've had many citizens ask me about that sidewalk gap.
Yes, that's the plan. We don't have a design yet, so we don't really have a good estimate, but that's our best estimate to design and construct it. And it shouldn't be, I don't think there will be any right of way needed, maybe an easement here or there, but that's the plan.
Anybody else on this? Are we ready to go to the next page, guys, or the next section? Okay, thank you.
So let's see here if I can do this. So we'll go to page. Let's see here, we can do this right. There we go. This is Splosh2. It is page 54?
While you're doing that, Splosh1 was six years, right?
Correct. Get it to fit right on the page. So again, Splosh2. These are the projects. So these are, you'll see some continuation, but the majority of these projects are new projects or projects that are starting within Splosh2 dollars. We have forecasted at the top best available information we have, what we think revenue collections will be up through 2029, roughly 9.1 to 9.9 million dollars a year, each year. And then down below, we've programmed them, again, transportation being 80, almost 85%, 83% of the budget, and then public safety being 10 to 12% park screen space, and then a little bit of repairs and maintenance as well. And again, these are the projects that we've kind of talked about what's in the 2025 budget, and we work with Michael Smith to kind of get the out years budget as well, trying to leave a certain amount in road resurfacing, plus the L-MIC funding to make sure that that's always funded, and then some variability, depending on timing, working with Michael Smith to get these projects funding in the out years.
And 24 is that number because some of it came from the other Splosh? Is that correct?
So 2024, Splosh2 started collecting in April.
Right.
So we did, we are starting to receive money this year in 2024 for Splosh2 projects.
But the smaller repaving number is because
Correct, because we split it, yes, yes, it's a, it's a half, quarter year or three-fourths year in this instance, yes. So we used a little bit in Splosh1 and then finished it with Splosh2. Correct, I'm sorry.
Yeah, question.
So now this is more for, I guess, sort of Michael Smith, but like, Michael's, the Mount Vernon-Tilly Mill intersection, I see that's extended cash now through 2026. I had sort of thought that we were going to get ready by the end of this year for that project that would be fully funded?
Yes, we stretched that out a little bit to to make the cash flow work. We've gotten the utility relocation plans back from the utilities, and it's going to take them at least a year to move their facilities. So we may be under contract for construction, but a lot of the money really won't, we won't really be spending a lot of the money till late 25, 26, by the time the utilities move out of the way.
I, I, yeah, all right. Well, I'm, this first time I've hearing this, I'm not sure if the rest of council knew about this at all. I was in under the impression that it was going to be shovel-ready by the end of this year, and we're going to have construction start and have a contract out in the street imminently. So you're saying, when when is the most realistic timeframe that you think that will have construction start there, Michael?
Yes, well, I had reported back in May, I think, or so, that we needed to get the right of way and utility plans from the utilities by the end of June to be able to issue a contract by the end of the year. We're still working on the last parcel. We think it's about to be wrapped up the next week or so. So that was one delay, and then the utilities gave us their schedule, and they have a much longer schedule for relocation than than we anticipated. So we're we're kind of, our schedule is really based on their schedule.
I guess, I guess we'll have to leapfrog this one. It is what it is. I appreciate that, Michael Smith. And then I'd have to go back to say, well, what are the next major impactful public works projects that we have in the pipeline that are going to, I, we talked about already Ashford Dunwoody Trail, but along this list where how are we doing things faster, sooner, earlier with right of way and utility if if necessary? I just leave that as a statement. Well, let me, let me ask you another one. There just, I'll kind of change here. The the Winter's Chapel Path Phase 2, Charmont to Peeler. Is Peachtree Court, you know, that's interjurisdictional. There's Splosh, but is there also, I have two, two questions, that one. It's, there's some federal funding coming from that question, part number one. And where is that shown in the budget for the project? And number two is Peachtree Corners, Gwinnett County putting any financial contribution into it at all? And if not, have we asked them? If we have, are they amicable to helping fund any of that?
Yes, there is federal funding. There's a million and a half for construction. And that's what the schedule is based on, is when that funding is programmed. And then Peachtree Corners, the council approved an intergovernmental agreement with Peachtree Corners earlier this year that outlines their contribution. They'll be, they'll be paying for the portion of the right of way that's needed within Peachtree Corners and a proportional amount of the construction for the amount that's in Peachtree Corners.
So looking at the numbers, it's basically, so, you know, I don't know how long it took to build the first phase of that Winter's Chapel. There was a lot of work. You were doing stormwater, you're doing intersection realignment, the landscaping looks great, mid-block pedestrian crossing, so on and so forth. So, and I'm looking at this here now, so when are we targeting for that for for construction? Is it the end of 2020? It would be 2029? What would that look like as of today best best estimate?
The the, with the federal money involved, we're, we're on their timeline, really, of when the design will be approved. And so we have the construction funding program to align with the federal schedule. So that would be going to construction in 2028.
Thanks. And I've got this, the Mount Vernon Road Path Village to Vermac. We've got that in the FY 2025 for 250K. That's, and then if I look at the description of that, I I'm not certain that project description is what the project means. It looks to me that project description might have been copied. Just correct me if I'm wrong, if that that description seems to be from the Mount Vernon Road Corridor Project, which was from Mount Vernon Place to Corners or something. So could you confirm on page 55 the column, Mount Vernon Road Path Village to Vermac, if that's the correct description of the scope of what we're trying to do from a concept plan? Because I believe that 250K is for concept to to do a concept plan for this. But could you look at that description and tell me if that's correct?
I'll say that we worked on that independent kind of a Michael, so we might need to revisit. We'll, we'll take a note to revisit with Michael on that description and make sure it's accurate. Yes, that was, that could be a a finance fault as much as anything else.
I, I, I just, I'm just kind of making sure that we dot the Ts.
Yes.
Dot the Ts, dot the Is, you know what I mean?
Yes.
You know, because when I look at, you know, the the next time that council would have a say in this is when the concept design is presented to us. Right? You're you're going to put an RFP out on the street without asking the council what's in the scope of the RFP, and I'm looking at what's in the scope of the RFP is basically what's in this description.
Sure.
So, all right, so that's
I'll visit, I'll make a follow-up with Michael Smith.
All right, that's question one. Question two on that one, Michael, is now this is going Village to Vermac. And we really look at that intent, if we want to connect the mall to the village to get to Jet Ferry, we talked about that pathway and so on, Ashford Center Parkway, up to up to Shambly Dunwoody, at Womack around, and so on and so forth. So I'm looking at this, are we going to, when we say Village to Vermac, Michael, Michael, could we, are we going to concept this all the way to Shambly Dunwoody? When you say Village, I, are we going to go all the way to Shambly Dunwoody in that concept, Michael?
The intent was to go to Dunwoody Village Parkway. Because I think this this section of Mount Vernon would continue the shared use path. And then when you get to the village, what the Trail Master Plan calls for is a cycle track through the village. And so I think that would that would be a separate project. And what we're trying to design for Village to Vermac really is the next, a project that can be built as one project. And I think if you start trying to add on going through the village, it becomes probably a bigger project than we could fund anytime soon.
Well, I, I, I get that. Yeah, I get that, Michael, absolutely. I also look at it as, there's probably three more pieces to the puzzle to make the whole connectivity. Ashford Center Parkway is is missing that segment to do a concept if we need that as well. And then Shambly Dunwoody to Dunwoody Village Parkway. And I'm trying to back into the whole timing, ideally in 10 years, we talked about the idea in 10 years, can we have that built out? So backing into when can we get the concept done for those two missing segments? And would that all back into, say, 10 years from now, having those potentially come to fruition? Because we have, it's all about connectivity and people going to destinations. If we're going to build out Shambly Dunwoody in the village, and we're going to have all those great facilities along there, and eventually we get the Ashford Dunwoody done, that that Ashford Center Parkway doesn't seem too tough to do because it's four lane now. But I I do get that, let's build it to the Dunwoody Village Parkway from Shambly Dunwoody, right? How do we do that? And have it all kind of timed?
Yeah, I think we just yes, we do want to, and we talked about it at retreat, look at that 10-year plan, we're getting all that connected. I think for this five-year budget, there just wasn't any, unless we want to move something else around, there wasn't any money left in this five-year budget to program any additional projects.
Okay, all right. But we get it that it'll be somewhere coming down the pipeline that will do the concept for the other segments to try to time into getting those things tied in connection-wise, construction-wise.
Yes.
Thanks, okay. Thanks. I think that's about it for me on this, on these projects. Thanks.
I want to clarify something with Michael, just because I think if anybody happens to be paying attention with Georgia, years ago, when I went to bat for Dunwoody with Georgia Power on their their part of the project, if I understand it, a huge percentage of the time, especially in built-out areas, they won't start their right of way or easement discussions until we've completed successfully ours. Is that correct still, Michael?
That's, yes, they, we give them notice to proceed on their relocation, including acquiring their own easements. Once we've acquired ours, because you know, we want to make sure we can acquire what we need and don't have to change any of the design. I mean, we need the design to be final at that point before we turn the utilities loose. So so, yes, we acquire our right of way, then give Georgia Power a notice to proceed, and then they usually put in six months or whatever they need for their own right of way process before they start relocating.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. All right.
Anything else?
Anybody else? Have questions on this part? And this was the end of yours, right?
We have General Capital Project.
Okay, that next.
We have the Shambly Dunwoody Bridge for the one.
Oh, yeah, we want to talk about that. Where is that?
It's on page 54.
It's in this section?
Yes, in the middle of this page.
This is on the agenda tonight, but I think we could talk about it now. Tom Lambert, I think, had something to say, as he had mentioned to me. You can, would you like to kick off this discussion?
Um, yeah, sure. Thank you. So, yeah, so I, having basically, there's a couple of things to this. I mean, who the heck knows? This is going to be as part of the GDOT's top-end project, and who knows when or if that'll get going. It's probably several years down the road. So having 1.8 million in in city capital funds that could be directed to other projects that might be a higher priority right now. I'd rather not have that money tied up, as well as, I think in the spirit of Splosh, the the fund should be spent within that Splosh timeframe, and I don't think it's likely that we'll get around to spending that 1.8 within the next five or six year years of the current Splosh2 cycle. So I don't know what the what the answer to that is. I don't know what GDOT's commitment is for the city to proceed with those plans, but I I would just like to discuss, I guess, you know, I guess number one is what does GDOT require to move forward with that? But then also a contingency plan for the city, perhaps having those funds available in a future Splosh cycle or or other source of revenue. So I guess, Michael, can you speak to that? I hope I Uh, I guess, Michael, can you answer, speak to that? I hope I made it clear enough.
Yes, yes. We had a meeting with GDOT last week and what we're, what we're hearing now is that they're going to want any, any enhancements we want, that we're going to contribute towards the cost of, they're going to want those agreements in place by next summer. Now, I do think there is some flexibility on when we actually have to cut them a check for all or some, or some or all of it. But the agreement, they're saying needs to be done by next summer. Uh, one of the reasons we went ahead and put it in 25 besides that's when we planned to sign the agreement is we were spending out some of the, we put all the SPOLOST surplus in 25. So we wanted to go ahead and allocate that out of the SPOLOST surplus. I mean, it, I, I, I think GDOT would probably work with us to push some or all of it out to a future year, but then without the surplus, you know, we, if we push it out in a future year, it starts to eat up a lot of the budget for that year. And especially if you get out to, uh, like 27 or 28, where we have some of those federal projects programmed. It doesn't leave a lot of money to, to fit everything in.
So. Michael, have they given you the latest plan of when, so it was, there was, it's my understanding that the whole project is being reimagined, I guess is the last word.
Yes.
What again? Is that right, Michael? That they're only like to build one side and right now it's north, but we sure could advocate for south instead. And it's going to go from Tucker to Cumberland or something? Is that about right?
Yes, they're, they're saying the, the initial bid or contract will be for the westbound lanes, which is the north side of 285 from Henderson Road to Raider Drive, uh, before you get to the Chattahoochee River. And it will also include the tie-in to, um, 400 northbound. And they're saying the, the reason that will be first and because it's the easier part to build.
And did they, um, tell you what their staging plan is right now? Have you been able to ferret that out?
They have not, and I don't know that they really know, because this is going to be a design, build, finance, operate, maintain, I think. And so they will put some parameters in there, but a lot of that will be up to the contractor.
So I'm skeptical that this is going to happen in this SPOLOST term. The 1.8 million is like a down payment on the bridge?
That, that's a.
Right, for our enhancements, correct?
Right.
For our enhancements. And so have we, are, we've done the design, so, I mean, enough. And they kind of, I think it wouldn't be wrong for us to just say, we're going to give you the money when somebody's moving dirt on this project or something. I mean, it feels like they should be flexible and open to some negotiations with us because we continue to take the brunt of these projects. Because this, on this stretch, we'll have the most residents, like the most people living in their homes or apartments, condos that will be impacted again. So it feels like that maybe a conversation with Russell McMurray or what I, what I find with the teams on, the project teams on these projects is they are very confident that it's going to start tomorrow. Always. I don't know if you found that too, Michael, or next week, next year, whenever they say it's going to start. But we just lived through seven years of a project that started late and should have finished a lot earlier, right?
Yes.
So if we kick this down the road, what's the the downside is, is we might have to come up with a lot of money at once, if we're going to do it.
Right, right. I, I think they will have some flexibility with us, but but let's say we try to push the 1.8 million out to 2028 or 2029. We have a lot of federal commitments at that point. So like, for example, if we push it out to 2028, we would have to kick out Corners, Mount Vernon Corners to Mount Vernon Place a little further. And we, and we really can't move all that up very much because of schedule of everything else. So I do think we have some flexibility, but we'll have to figure out if we put it out to 28 or 29, then what other project gets pushed further out because we're having to put that money in there.
Although maybe SPOLOST will come in higher again, too.
Possibly.
Because we. Go ahead.
And just to clarify, there's, there's nothing that can be moved up? You know, something that's two years out that we could shift earlier and use that money? To 1.8, like, do we have 1.8 million worth of already scheduled projects that we could do earlier? That then we would have that money available further down the road for when the bridge
Right.
comes up. And it sounded like you said that maybe that wasn't the case.
I can go back and look for something that size. It may, may be hard to find something for 25. I, I think we could. One thing for 26 that would be possible, I think, is the perimeter center east project, um, which is a few lines down that we have some, we'll have some matching money from the CID and what we're envisioning that project as now will be in the right of way. So I think it's a project that could be executed pretty quickly. So that's one I would look to move up.
But Michael, don't we also have a, um, a rezoning on that for when they put in their condos to re-put in the path at that point?
We do, and we were hoping they were going to do that, but it sounds like they're not going to move forward anytime soon. I mean, I, you know, I guess there's no way to predict. I mean, they could come in next year, but all indications are they're not the developers not moving forward with that project.
Yeah, but that is on the books is all I'm saying.
Yes.
Take this, are you okay, Tom? Yeah.
Uh, I was just going to make one, uh, comment or question to Michael. It, it, would it make sense rather than, um, committing that full 1.8 million all the way up front now, knowing that it's five or six years down the road, probably when it will be spent? Is, is there more benefit to perhaps, if there's a concern about having to come up with that, in essence, balloon payment down the road? Just allocating $300,000 a year over the next six years to get to that same number? And then having those additional funds available now for projects that we can work on today?
Yeah, I think that would be doable. And maybe we can talk to GDOT and see, you know, how much flexibility we have. See, you know, how, how much we can push out, how long.
Okay. So 300,000, change it from 1.8 million to 300,000 a year for the next five or six years? And if something, if something changes, we can figure something out. But I'm incredibly, I was with some state legislators last week and there's a growing skepticism of this kind of transportation infrastructure investment. So maybe they definitely suggested conversation. So we'll see.
So what is the takeaway? If we do that, then, then we're freeing up? And then so Michael Smith, do you get to come back and reallocate some other things then with, with that?
Yes, so we'll, we'll figure, that'll give us one and a half million and 2025 will figure out the best way to try to move some things up to to fill that out.
Okay.
I guess I still have questions about what's an enhancement. I guess that conversation will be tonight, but what if we did nothing at all? Do we still get the flyover bridge for Cattillon to Savoy? Do we still get? I mean, there's certain things.
It was decorative and functional. It wasn't.
Right, it's just decorative stuff.
Well, and it was, we asked for extra width so that people could get across safer.
Okay.
But it was not, they have to build the bridge.
Well, that's why I kind of want to, that's the discussion tonight, right? Okay, just want to understand where we're at.
Right, they have to build the bridge. All right.
SPOLOST II, then we're good. I will note that change. We'll work with Michael to, to make that change. So. Last one, real quickly, is, uh, General Capital Project Fund, Fund 350. Uh, let me see. 56, yes.
Okay.
And so, uh, in, in terms of like better word, new money going in, uh, this is generally speaking, general fund dollars that would fund a lot of these projects. So we're only moving a hundred thousand dollars or so in a year to, uh, uh, fund the desktops, new desktops and laptops right now, and kind of using existing funding to, uh, uh, bridge the gap for projects that are already out there. So this one's done a little bit differently. If you look, the revenue side is, is the top part is, is, uh, that's just in the out years basically. But if you look at the expenditure part down below is where you'll see, so we've got the total prior year budget and what we think we're going to spend for the rest of this year. So I'm getting at a total of what I think we're going to have spent under it. And then trying to forecast out what's remaining at the end of 2024, going into 2025. And then how we spend it, how we would potentially spend it over the year, uh, over the life of the CIP, basically. So, um, IT's got projects up, up above, as we've talked about. Police has some small projects, uh, for lack of a better word, leftover dollars, so to speak, within their, uh, for public safety related dollars. And then Public Works and Parks have the majority of the dollars. And the majority of the parks dollars is indeed related to the, uh, Shalford Road proceeds is, uh, toward, when you get toward the bottom. Uh, the last couple of projects for parks at the bottom are their, are the Shalford Road proceeds park, uh, parks related projects. So this tricky, this schedule I know gets a little, a little tricky. I'm trying to determine how to best show it. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have on some of these projects. But again, these are general capital project dollars, so.
Go ahead, Rob.
Do, do we really think that we're going to spend $600,000 for just laptops and desktops alone over the next five years? Is that, or is that placeholder for general IT funds? Or do we really think that?
So, uh, so your call back to the, uh, and I don't know if Ginger's down.
So I'm, I'm on the line. I can, I can answer for you. I'm sorry. So it's not only for just laptops and desktops, it would include monitors and things like that. It is an estimation based on a third of the replacements. So we do plan on replacing a third of the laptops, monitors, things like that. We're hoping we wouldn't have to use it. But we, we have to kind of budget according to potential need.
That's fine. I just, it seemed large, but I don't know what, I don't know how old what we have is right now and what the replacement schedule is. I just, this question. Thank you.
Does that include the laptops and the police cars? I mean, that, it's everything, or is that just?
No, that's actually only for the, the Dell style laptops. The police car, uh, theirs are getting replaced this year, actually. But they are on a different schedule. That's for a third of the, the Dell laptops, the, the NOOCs, those types of things that we have around the the center, the agency.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I just want to, we haven't really discussed it yet. Uh, but this is the part, this is a slide where the, uh, the turfing of the field at Peachtree Middle School is allocated. And I, there's been some conversation in the community and I, and some of that information isn't entirely accurate. So I just want to kind of clarify a little bit as far as why that money is currently allocated as it is. As, uh, some may recall, uh, really over the past two to three years, uh, the city did a deep dive into its capital priorities and its capital project list. We convened a citizens committee to evaluate a large list of well over 100 capital projects uh, and to make recommendations. Um, I actually chaired that committee, so I was, uh, very much involved with it. So I feel I can speak from a place of confidence as far as what the, the committee's intentions are and what that process was. So obviously this was all, this was done, number one, to get a priority list for our projects, but also uh, with anticipation of putting, uh, forth the bond referendum, which we did last year. Um, so, um, first of all, the projects that we put together and the allocation of the funding, uh, as it was, 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 was comprehensive. And what I mean by that is everything that we did in assigning projects to certain areas was done with the presumption of a successful bond referendum. As we know, that referendum did not pass. Uh, so I, and so that basically resets the clock, I believe, as far as where funds are allocated. You know, initially, uh, the thought was actually to put the, the Peachtree Middle School turf into the bond referendum, but for a lot of reasons, it was decided that was not the best idea. You know, one of those being that we don't own that property, uh, and using bond funds to invest in property we didn't own. Uh, what wasn't viewed the best use of those, those proceeds. So, uh, so I just wanted to mention that. So the allocation was based on the presumption of, of a successful bond referendum. Um, and also, uh, there's a little bit of a discussion, I've heard that that the Peachtree Middle School turf was the top priority for the citizens committee. And that, and that's really not an accurate statement. The, the citizens committee did not rank the projects in their final list. Uh, they came up with a list of projects that they felt were the top priorities for the city, but they did not rank those in any specific order. There are actually projects that, uh, were on that list that haven't, uh, been funded at all to this point, you know? For example, one is the, the committee recommended a splash pad at Brook Run Park. And that's not even on our radar right now. And there were several trail projects that the committee thought were priorities that are also not funded. So. You know, the, the citizens committee did a lot of work. I think they did a great job putting this list together. Uh, but it was not a end-all be-all. It was a recommendation of, of citizen priorities to the council. And then they kind of handed that list to us for us to then prioritize available, you know, capital and assets to try and get as many of those done. And that's what we tried to do last year. Uh, it was unsuccessful. So now the clock's reset as far as allocating all of those funds. So I just wanted to make that comment because I don't think, um, that has been crystal clear in the community uh, based on some of the, some of the emails and conversations we've had. And so I just wanted to explain how that process worked. And if there's any additional questions related to how the committee did that, I'll be happy to answer those.
Anybody? I think one thing about this, this particular project is, is because I spent I don't know how long working with the school system and talking to them, and they were kind of flip-flopping around. Is in the meantime, you know, we were talking about it and we were talking to the school system, but we didn't ever ask for an evaluation internally about whether it would be even a good investment there. The other night, uh, Saturday night, a few weeks ago, I was out and there were 50 adults playing soccer on that field just from wherever. And I don't, I don't know much about turf fields, but I have a feeling that's probably not necessarily unstructured, unrestricted use is probably not great for the turf. So I, I also have that concern, um, as well. And then I have a question about North Peachtree Corridor, if that's okay to pivot, unless somebody wants to talk about some of this first.
Yeah, and I, I just want, just one, I'm sorry, just one thing I forgot to mention, you know, because there's, there was, again, this part of some of the dialogue that I've been hearing in the community. I know I'm speaking for myself, but I think the entire council is well aware that we need more athletic facilities for our, um, or for youth sports and other sports. We came up with a very good plan to add several new athletic sports. But again, that failed. So now, uh, the capital's not there to do that. It's not a matter of not recognizing this as a glaring need for the city. It's a matter of having the resources available to move forward with them.
Go ahead, Catherine.
I want to be clear that the school system never signed off on doing this while we offered. There was no agreement. They were never waiting for us to do this because they never said yes.
No, the, the school, our school board member was getting a lot of pressure and so they have reached out periodically, quite frankly, sometimes with different answers from different people that work for the school system. But, um, no, I think they would cooperate with us. What the public needs to understand is in Georgia, we have something called the gratuities clause, which means that if I give DeKalb County something, they have to give us something in return that's equal value. That's why we have this kind of convoluted use agreement over at Peachtree Middle School because of value, I'm going to get it wrong. But I think the value of the land that, that we gave them for the elementary school, where Dunwoody Seniors was, was worth more than the value of the place relocating. So we, there was this extra field that we get to use after school. And it's like, it's like assumed that the lease is valued at a certain amount per year. And it was for this many years to make the value balance. Does that sound pretty accurate?
I agree.
So, okay, go ahead, John.
Well, thank you. Uh, important topic for everybody. Field space in the city of Dunwoody. The city of Dunwoody did the land swap back in the day. We had money extra aspect. We rented these fields going into the future. Um, we were paying another 1.3 million of value that we prepaid on that value. The citizens committee was formed by the city council. We each threw members on there. And to the best of my recollection, there was a ranking, there were documents, there were scoring, and there were documents put out forward that said that the Peachtree Middle School field was a valuable investment from the citizens that served on that committee. I think that we had funding ready to go. Again, discussions with the school system were ongoing and I believe are still ongoing. I'm hearing that, yes, the Peachtree, the, uh, we had the principal of Peachtree here at one time at public comments. She was looking forward to it. Um, I'm hearing that we should have continued the discussions with the school system. We should ask for a contract extension so that we get the full value that we have the, we're putting a little money in, we extend the contract and we put the turf in for the playable fields. I, I think it's an important investment that we've already made, not only in the time that we've contracted. As you, we've already talked about, we had the hotel motel funds put in the lights. We've already put in the storage building. I think it makes sense to put this amenity in. It's in our budget. I think that money should stay there and that we should work with the school system in order to, uh, put that, to have a successful, place for expanded field usage. That's, that's my opinion.
I guess if we're making it clear to the community, this council's not holding up this project. This is not.
That's not totally it. Well, it's very confusing because Eric can have a conversation with someone on one day. I can have a conversation on someone with another day. But it's complex. It would, it's, let me just say that if last year, in the beginning of the year, whenever Dr. Horton came, so that might not have been all last year. Representatives from the school system came and talked to the mayors and they said about facility sharing. And they said that they did not, they were, they never envisioned giving another IGA or joint use agreement for more than 10 years, at which point the mayors of the meeting said that we won't be sharing facilities because there's no reason to invest in something, like invest in your property, right? I mean, it's one thing if they were sharing our property, but invest in your property for only a 10 years and, right, right? And, um, and so that was the language we were up against for a long time, correct Eric? I mean, they were really resistant. They seemed to be softening some. But I think there is a second track here, which is it, it was brought up. Correct me if I'm wrong, but much of the list that the citizens committee evaluated, I'm probably going to get this wrong, at least for projects that were already on our radar somewhere. Is that correct, Tom?
Um, yes, uh, and, 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 and let me, uh, yeah, so we had a list of, I believe the number, and I might be off by one or two, but I believe the number was a hundred and four capital projects. Um, and so let me just clarify something too that John raised, uh, because he talked about a list with a ranking. And, uh, this was a, a long process that took several months and I believe the committee met nine times over those several months. Um, and, um, initially because that list was so long, uh, the committee did do an official, an initial ranking by category, uh, just to give us a manageable list to start with. Because rather than trying to sit down and say, there's a hundred projects here, what's most important? We wanted to kind of get a consensus of these are the ones we want to discuss, uh, the most. And that way we can kind of let the cream rise to the top and kind of discard the projects that nobody, uh, thought wa- wanted to be a part of the discussion. And so in that initial list, the Peachtree field, uh, was at the top of the parks list. It wasn't the highest scoring project though. There are actually two trail projects that scored higher than it. Uh, but that was an initial part of the process. Uh, as the committee continued to work, um, we did not come up with a prioritized list to end. This was, that was just a part of the initial process to give us a workable list for the final, uh, discussion on which projects the committee would recommend.
Well, it'd be my hope that the city, uh, goes out with a formal bid process in order to get the full scope. I mean, if we need to talk to the school system and get that agreement first, I think we should be working towards that, looking to extend the contract for the, any excess funds so that we're not giving them a gratuity. But from what I'm hearing, both our school board member, uh, future school board member, uh, as well as some of the school administration are looking forward that this project move forward. And I think we have the funds that have been budgeted for the last year plus. And, uh, in this budget, I think we should be moving forward with it.
So another part of the discussion that we're not having right now is, in my opinion, um, and this is aside from the committee's work and all the things I mentioned below, uh, before, um, was again, I, I, I do not deny the fact that we desperately need athletic fields in the city. Uh, the question isn't whether we need them. The question is, uh, where is the most appropriate space to dedicate limited funding? So right now at Peachtree, there is a grass field that is usable. Uh, the city only gets that a couple of hours a day during the week and then on weekends, uh, and we do not own that property. So I guess the discussion isn't a matter of whether we need fields, but should we be putting our limited capital into a field that we don't own? And have limited use of, or is that money better spent at another location? And building a, a brand new field at a different location, um, where now we're adding an additional field that doesn't currently exist. And we're investing city money onto property that perhaps the city owns. And I'll use an example. We had a plan for, um, uh, Wildcat Park, um, and, um, the total build out of that park, uh, far exceeded the million dollars, but perhaps there's a way that we don't do the full build out. Maybe we can, uh, scrape up capital or find a way to build just a, a field, a turf field at that location that would meet the needs of the community. Um, and now we're putting city money onto city property that we have full use of, uh, while still having a grass field that's serviceable, um, at another location. So again, that's just a part of the discussion. Uh, you know, I, I think that's things that we need to consider rather than just saying, you know, part of a larger plan, we allocated money here. Uh, because as I mentioned, that whole plan, that allocation was part of a much bigger plan that no longer exists. So we need to decide if, in my opinion, that's the best place to invest that money or does this, there's a community get, uh, more advantage of perhaps investing that where we'll have more use, more control and on property that we own. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, I, um, I'd like us to take a breath and at least give staff some time to look at the pro- pros and cons of, just because I don't know enough about turf to understand what it means that the school might be using it all day. And I'm really concerned about the amount of people that are on that field on the weekends. And it's not our property. It's going to be hard. I mean, I did actually talk to the school system about possibly securing it, but it's very difficult to do. They don't secure their property anywhere. And so I think it's Eric potentially worth having Rachel and her team look at, look at, start with that option and what it would look like with the amount of use that's getting out. Again, I don't know, does turf last forever? Does it vary by how many people are you, I don't, you don't have to answer these questions. These are all hypothetical. So.
Yeah, it doesn't last forever. If I remember right, the expected life expectancy is about 10 years, but it, it, as sex, it depends on the sport and the usage and as sections get worn out, they can be replaced in pieces rather than a complete, uh, replacement.
Okay. On this, okay, that's fine. I had North Peachtree to ask about, but you can do this first. Go.
Um, couple of questions. There is six hundred thousand dollars, um, in the twenty twenty five budget for road resurfacing. That's usually something we pay out of Splat. Was that just an overage that we couldn't fit in our Splat budget?
So when I put together the schedule and I, I try to set aside money so it's budgeted in case we need to use it, just it, because the budget doesn't necessarily mean it'll be spent or anything like that. I just want the budget to be in place. So if, uh, something does come up, we've got the funds available within the budget and we can proceed. Um, I can get with Michael and see if there's something, if there's a need for it or not.
Okay, well, because see, what I'm now thinking is that we just took away 1.8 million dollars. One point five. So we could be, and I'm just thinking, you know, budget wise, because the general capital funders, we know is more flexible, so we could move the six hundred thousand to Splat and then that gives us six hundred dollars of more flexible money. I just, with something else to do, I mean, right?
For operations.
For operation, right?
Uh, sure, yeah, if it's, uh.
If, if, if that's what we, because that can be moved over to Splat if that's what we want to do, which frees up money that we can spend on anything, correct?
You could increase the road resurfacing budget within Splat and, uh, and do something with these funds.
Whatever, yeah, absolutely. Okay, my next question is on the Veterans Memorial. Because it just has thirty three thousand dollars budgeted with sixty six thousand before, but I thought we had a hundred thousand dollars from DeKalb. Where, where's?
It's in there. It's, we've got a hundred thousand dollars. We've spent sixty six thousand of it, or we're forecasting to spend sixty six thousand. And then that'll leave in there some rounding in there sixty six, sixty seven thousand.
Okay.
And then they'll leave thirty three, thirty four thousand of that hundred thousand dollars left. And I believe, uh, and I think Rachel's in here, uh, I believe we've got a design contract to spend the remaining portion, a large portion of that, if not all of it.
So we did get a hundred thousand dollars from DeKalb.
Correct.
So that's the total. So are we not putting any of our own money into this?
So, I'm.
Sorry, I just.
So if we do fund the project, we will, and that's why I've left that contingency line. If and when we award a construction project for it, we would look to move money into the project, yes, for the amount of the construction. Uh, Rachel might speak better about.
Construction, right, yeah. So the, yeah, the hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, so the hundred thousand dollars that's in there is from, is from DeKalb. Um, thus far it's been spent on design and then redesign. Um, so once we get to construction and know what we're looking at in terms of pricing to build the design, yeah, it will be have to pulled from, from other places because thirty three won't, won't be enough to build it, right?
Okay. Can I talk about this for one second before you go on? So in Swanny recently, like in the last year or two, they decided to do a citizen driven, this wasn't even citizen driven, council driven fundraising campaign for public art. And they used a consultant, I guess a fundraising consultant, and they had fifteen families that were eager to participate. And they donated a minimum of fifteen thousand dollars over three years. And that would have been a half million dollars, but today, up to date, they've raised 1.7 million. And they expect by the time they finish the campaign, they will have raised two million dollars. It feels like if we want something grand, first of all, I don't even know that we have any funding to pay for anything at this point, do we? Like design, but did we, have we identified city funds to pay for this memorial?
Specifically other than the thirty three thousand?
Yes, okay. So the feedback we gave, I think when we saw the design a few weeks ago was eh, meh. So a question I have is, is, is there a way to do outreach, not for us, like, should we be looking at a different strategy for paying for this rather than city funds? Because we don't really have it. Let's be honest, we don't really have any city funds. Well, you did, so we could use that, but it just feels like there's an opportunity here. Maybe not to raise all the funds, but to raise some of the funds, potentially, I don't know. But I guess we'll wait. Are we sent, did we send it back again for redesign?
So our next step is to vet it with the VFW.
Oh, right.
On their, their next meeting date to have them look and.
Okay, so we're not there yet, correct? I guess wait till they vet it.
Could I add, add in something here as well? I believe, uh, maybe we could talk to Sandy Springs to them. If I'm not mistaken, Sandy Springs is doing a veterans memorial and they are doing it actually a public fundraising, uh, to help fund that.
We can talk to them. Eric, can you get the research done on that, please?
It's, uh, yeah, if you just Google it, it's Sandy Springs Foundation and it's in the news. If you look up Sandy Springs Veterans Park, September fifth, just four days ago, five days ago in the news. And so they created a nonprofit headed by the mayor. Uh, wink, wink. Yeah, right. Uh, but yeah, and they're, they're engravers, bricks, fundraiser, blah, blah, blah.
Maybe some veterans should be on that committee from the city.
Right.
Whoa.
Yes, too, right. So it's just something for us to think about, I guess. Get the feedback from the VFW because that, but also let them know we're looking into private fundraising. And see where we go with that. Thank you. All right, Jim, more questions? All right, can we talk about the North Peachtree Corridor, which is really not you, Richard? It's really, Michael Smith, are you on there? Are you here, Michael Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, is there a page where she should be looking at?
No, but you know, we had the, the, we applied for that safe route.
Yeah.
No, what was it called? Sage Street for All Grant and we didn't get it for that corridor. And it was a very expensive ask. And when you look, I just want to, when you look, Joe sent out, I don't know if he sent it to everybody, but he sent me the, he sent us the link. And when you look at the, the data on the places that were selected, unfortunately, they've had a lot of loss of life. In the, so in other words, the corridors that are picked, they, they said that, you know, these whatever have had this many lives, hundreds of lives lost. Knock on something really hard. But in that, do you remember how much it was going to be like 10 million dollars or 12? Who remembers? Michael, how much was it going to be?
I think it was fifteen.
Right, it was hugely expensive. There are pieces of that project that need to get done. I mean, they, it needs to get done. The sidewalk on North Peachtree, that's like a strip of bubble gum, no, not bubble gum, chewing gum, you know, tiny. Go ahead, John.
Madam Mayor, I don't disagree with anything you're saying or about to say, but I'd also love this to be a bigger conversation where maybe tonight we get added to the agenda and get a full packet information from the Public Works Director to actually what he presented. Because we're talking now publicly about something that nobody knows about. I barely know what it, we're talking about. And I know we put something forward, but.
We'll put it for two weeks because.
That's fine, but I'm just, I, I want it to be an important conversation that Peach, that the, the sidewalk along North Peachtree Road where hundreds of children walk from the apartment complex to the elementary school to the middle school is literally the narrowest sidewalk next to a street with little kids. With boys being boys. So I mean, I'm just, it is a dangerous sidewalk and I don't disagree with you and I'd love for it to be a bigger conversation.
So Michael, can we put that on the agenda for two weeks? Or whatever the next council meeting is, because I was worried about this when they presented it for this grant. That if we didn't get it, I want to, I want to understand what we do now. It can't be, in my opinion, it can't be nothing. Right? I mean, that's just my opinion, but we'll talk about it at a council meeting. But it kind of, but that's time because it plays into the budget some, but the budget we will not even be approving then yet. So we have time. All right. It, well, it's whoever has a question.
So, um, just in general capital, um, are we doing a sand volleyball court over in Brook Run? Is that forecasted? Are we putting one in? I was hoping it would just be something cheap and cheerful and simple to have a dump truck full of sand dumped there and a couple of, you know, whatever, and put a post then and.
So that was part of the Brook Run Phase Two. Um, we were going to build, so sand volleyball court over towards Tree Top Quest with new pavilion and, and all that. Um, right now all that's on hold just because the park is, is busy, I mean, as, as we've ever had it. I believe the funding for that grant, this was several years ago, was probably close to half a million dollars. But that included site work, adding the pavilion, it wasn't just the sand volleyball court.
Well, I thought, yeah, maybe that's another conversation, but, uh, again, it's like almost from operating expense. We could, maybe we stick it out on Roberts or stick it on Vermac. I don't know, but something simple to activate something if Brook Run's already fully activated.
Yeah, could I, while, while that's on there, could I just toss in a comment on that? So, yeah, so as, as Rachel mentioned, that was part of Phase Two, which was again in the bond and so another casualty of that not being successful. But, um, I, I like the idea of perhaps. But I like the idea of perhaps if, if it doesn't fit right into Brook Run, that maybe we look at Homecoming Park. Because I believe we had discussion of not doing pickleball there. And perhaps this would be a nice replacement of the pickleball courts and just putting the, the sand volleyball there. And again, that could be something that hopefully we could do at a lower cost without the full build out, perhaps a little quicker, I don't know. I know there's logistics involved that things are sometimes far more complicated than we make them, but, but certainly I, I would like us to at least look into the possibility of, of maybe putting that over at a homecoming if Brook Run's not the right spot.
A few years ago, Norcross did one just temporary, they must have put down some tarp or something around their, their greenway. And it was just a summer thing and then it was gone, you know, so I don't.
Just a point of information, we, the city always look for feedback from our citizens. There's planning, there's meetings, there's discussions of where things should be and where they shouldn't be. And best as I know, the volleyball was planned at the back of Brook Run Park over there by Treetop Quest. It seemed to make sense for me to keep that plan the way it is. And we do have a 1.7 million in unallocated capital that could be used for things like this if we still wanted to include them.
Looks like no, I, I would lean towards trying to do something, so.
I wouldn't support an investment like that that's going to be permanent when we don't have bathrooms. I mean, why would we?
You mean at those other parks?
At the other park.
But if you put it at Brook Run, there's plenty of bathrooms. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Well, point of information, actually the nearest bathroom isn't that close. There's porta potties, what's over at Treetop Quest right now?
They have their trailers and that was part of the, so the, the build out of the same volleyball was the pavilion with the restrooms.
Got it, okay, thank you.
There are bathrooms in the park. I mean, people can walk for heaven's sake, sorry.
Again, that was a casualty, a bomb failing was no bathrooms there.
While you're here, Rachel, maybe we do combine the projects, you know, we talked about the Brook Run Maintenance Building that's going to be out. And then we're thinking about a SWAT storage thing. Is there some synergy putting that together in a single, single bid and combining those two together? And you just have one facility and here's, here's where that, maybe it could, maybe there's some synergy efficiencies economy scale could, could be done in that. If you're going to use the same space. So the other ones were, I think this is a little bit more for maybe Rachel or maybe Michael Smith, just in general. Drinking fountains in our city. Now, it's in the parks, we have it at Brook Run, but think about as we expand our trail network. Maybe we do some things in, in the Dunwoody Village, whatever, simple drinking fountains. And, and I look at it that as a, you know, you got the ones for the little doggy, then you have an ADA level. So somebody's in a wheelchair and then the standing two, just something to think about of saying, well, you know, let's put some drinking fountain someplace. When we have, when we start activating these spaces and there's more users of those folks to do that. My, this is for Michael then on the, either Michael Smith or Sterling, but he's not here. For the public art in our roadway projects, are, is that our, so what is our, can someone remind me of when we're doing, when we did the Womack and Ver, wait a minute, so Womack and Chambly Dunwoody. And we did public art there. I see that came from Hotel Motel Tax. But we, we have a policy now that we're going to set aside a certain amount of money for public art. So when I think about like the Mount Vernon Tilly Mill, is, is there a public art component to the Mount Vernon Tilly Mill intersection?
Yes, the policy now is 1% of the project for public art. We've been applying that on larger projects. It probably doesn't make much sense to do it on a, you know, even a $500,000 project because it's only going to be $5,000. But for say, you know, say a million and above projects, we're applying that 1%.
So is there, would there be something somewhere, wherever, however, would fit physically, geographically? I mean, I mean, with the right way, with Mount Vernon Tilly Mill, is, is there something that's going to be shoehorned in potentially there? And would that, how, how's that look or how that process flow?
That would be something for the Art Commission to look at. To figure out what and where to try to put something on that project.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear the question.
Public art for the Mount Vernon Tilly Mill intersection.
So yeah, so what, what we've decided is 1% of any project moving forward. And so what we would need to do is then, once the project is designed, the Art Commission can get involved and look at exactly where the piece of art should go.
Kind of mirroring kind of what we did in the Georgetown, Chambly Dunwoody.
Yeah, I mean, getting involved earlier is always better to just sort of see what's happening. But the project really needs to get built first, so we know exactly where the sidewalk's going to go, what's, what's the best location.
Yeah, we got a couple of years, I think. All right, back to Michael Smith, wayfinding, there's simple MUTCD directional signage. I noticed, by the way, on Chambly Dunwoody, I do see the bicycle route sign. I think that's the first time I've seen a bicycle route sign in the city of Dunwoody, but that's just a standard metal locally produced fabricated MUTCD green sign. And it has a direction on there because we have the multi-use path that changes sides on Chambly Dunwoody. I've, I've asked for this throughout the years and I would just continue to ask for it for the simple wayfinding. I'm not talking about the heavy do lift, expensive, nice stuff, but just to have a signage that points to the library, that points to the nature center, that points to Brook Run, that shows where things are, just directional signage of how to, how to move around in the city, but putting it that simple metal MUTC design. Are we, is that anywhere along? I know we're, it looked like we're doing wayfinding in the perimeter area, but is there any traction on that at all citywide, Michael Smith, for that?
The, the line item that was in the Hotel Motel is to do wayfinding signs along the parts of the trail system that are not just in perimeter, but throughout the city, parts of the trail system that are built.
So that's a trail, of course, but it's also, I mean, I, I think this is a greater conversation. I'd like to entertain with the folks on council is just to kind of let people know, oh, there's the nature center, there's the library. There's these other amenities that happen to be here in the city that citizens, you know, people passing by may not even know about.
Yeah, I think that is a bigger discussion. We, yeah, we've talked about that in the past and, you know, there, I mean, even for the metal signs, there needs to be a, a project for that. I mean, that, that's a, depending on how many signs you want to put out. You know, that's a, you got to figure out where all they need to go and then the money needs to be there to do that. I'll say, I spent a lot of time this summer kind of going along the Belt Line in different places in Atlanta. And in my experience, my recommendation would be to focus on wayfinding for bicycles and how they get from one part of the trail to the other. I think when people are in their cars, they tend to rely on apps. I don't know, other than having signage at the facilities, I don't know how much people really use that type of wayfinding signs because they just plug it into a map. And if you're walking, those same apps are pretty good for routing you where you need to go. But I think for, you know, motor, non-motor, you know, bicycles or scooters, something like that, where you're trying to use a facility is where those signs could be most useful. But, and that's, and that's what we programmed for, for Hotel Motel. If the council wants to do something different than that, then we'll, you know, need to know what that is and try to program it.
Bye, Michael. Oh, and by the way, even though we talked about Chambly Dunwoody Bridge way down the pipe, when that ever, ever gets closer, is Chambly the city of Chambly, south of 25? Do they have any, what's their 10-year plan for multi-use facilities? Do, do they have a, a budget forecast to show that, like us, we did the north side of Chambly Dunwoody? Are they going to, are they doing the south side? And, and in 10 years, are they going to have anything built out on the south side of, of 25 along Chambly Dunwoody? Do you know, Michael?
I'm not sure. And I think when you cross 285 on Chambly Dunwoody, I think the west side of the road is actually Brookhaven and the east side is Chambly. And I think Brookhaven does show something in their trail plan, but the last time I talked to them a few years ago about it, that was not one of their priority projects.
And, and Chambly's been, we've been focused, although we probably need to have the conversation again with the North Peachtree underpass, I guess that's what it's called, and making sure that it's passable and safe for pedestrians. So we probably need, Michael Smith, we probably need to resume that part of conversation with GDOT2 because it's all new people.
Yes.
The underpass is not only at North Peachtree, but North Peachtree is important because it's the other, both of them, Shaliford as well. They both have turnarounds.
Right, Shaliford is, I can't, I think we were confident with them with North Shaliford, a little less confident with North Peachtree, so, but we need to watch both of them.
Because again, both, if Italian and Savoy are one way. People are going to need to whip around to the other side, so that needs to be taken care of.
And Chambly on the other side, well, on their side of the access road, they have zoned that denser than perimeter center. Because of the, their belief that a rapid bus transit stop will increase, it'll be like a transit oriented development. So we'll see. There's also wetlands back there, so who knows? On, on to, back to finances. So I have one question for council. Now, well, you're probably part of the discussion, so let me make sure I understand this, $600,000 in capital for paving. That is from our general fund, correct? It's in that 2% of general fund that's used for capital. But maybe we should just use that for operations and, and if we can afford to, if, if the paving works with the numbers you have, and then reduce the pull on our reserves. Because, because, I mean, I don't, right, you found $600,000. And so that's just something to think about when you talk to Michael Smith, if we need it for paving.
Well, so let me understand, you want to do $600,000 less of paving?
No, but there's a $600,000 line item in.
In the general fund.
In the general fund.
Coming from SPOST instead, right, get that.
Right, so we would take, we could, well, I don't totally understand, maybe, Michael, where did this $600,000 come from? Right.
Richard, you might be able to answer that better.
Yes, it's, it's basically just a leftover of those funds. And I will say, we've been, these projects have been tracked outside of our software system. And I have been trying to track, move all, all of these projects actually into our financial software system and reconciling them. And that road resurfacing one is the last one that I'm trying to reconcile. So I will go back and look and see if indeed there is $600,000 available there or not. As I said, that's, there's a little bit of reconciliation process to make sure our financial system.
Well, Jay was going to, Jay was going to say, but I thought that money was coming from the one point from the bridge.
It's a line item, it's a line item.
But you were reducing the bridge from SPOST.
This is a separate, this is in the general, like the general fund used for capital on page, whatever. Jay, go ahead.
Two things, just to back up Richard on this, one of the things that a, in the previous financial administration, let's just leave it at that. This fund has had some trouble with reconciliation and they've done a yeoman's job in sorting it out. With this much in the budget that's currently proposed or 600,000 that's designated towards paving. If the council did decrease that and moved it back to general fund, it would still show as an additional, it would still show as a use of reserve because it would become a reserve in the general fund, it wouldn't be.
It's not 600,000 of revenue from the current year?
You would still, in the end, if you moved it from there, it would show, it's reserved. And in the end up, it would show up as, as part of funds.
I don't understand that at all. So if, are we earning the 600,000 in 2025?
You have already earned it in the past.
Never mind then. Never mind, okay. So it's like a carryover money, okay. And one thing I kind of heard muttered up here was with the one point, whatever, extra. If we wanted to do more paving, so that when we needed more money for the bridge, we maybe hit, if we can accelerate, I bet we can't. But if we can accelerate the completion of our last five years of the first round of paving, is that the way you would say it? That, then maybe we would have money for the bridge if we needed it. So something to think about.
I wouldn't disagree with that, depending on the scores that we have. There's, there's, there's reasons to pave in advance of it being needed, but there's also a good methodology of paving when it's needed. So it's just, if you pave the entire street, certainly in one year, you have to do it again and, yeah.
Right, it's, it's why, yeah, but I have a question about paving, Michael Smith, now that we brought it up. So we, in, in the end of 20 years, we will have touched every road, I think, that was supposed, like, that wasn't privately owned or brand new, correct? Pretty much? Okay, but, so when we go start forgetting about inflation, which you can't really forget about right now, when we go start the second round, like from the roads 20 years ago, do we expect it to be as costly as, as it is now with the roads that have never been touched?
No, that's part of the advantage of doing it, our system.
Okay.
And it'll be cheaper next time. There should be less deep patching, not to say it's a universal, but it is a goal and that should be the case.
Okay.
And Michael could also say that we, we could also do, instead of repaving, it could be the patching in the ceiling. We can seal more streets, which would then put an extra 10 years on it.
Right, I was just thinking about the bridge, like if, you know, right now we're spending, what, $3 million a year on paving, which is X percentage? But maybe five, six, seven years ago, you know, I know inflation or whatever, but you have to spend not quite as much, which then gives you more room in your budget for the bridge.
The last paving laser truck report gives a great methodology on how we spend our money towards paving and why. It's just, it goes back to the laser truck analysis and it's a, it's a nice report.
All right, does anybody have anything else? Tom, you okay?
I'm good, thank you.
Let's just look at the other big items as far as on the 350 and 25. We're doing $1 million to the nature center, what's the status of that?
I can do that one. We're actually meeting with them next week to start working on more plans with it. They have been slightly delayed because of stormwater tie-ins with it, but we're working on it.
We've talked about the turf, let's go to Brook Run Maintenance Building of 1.4 million, 1.3 million, what's the status of that?
Rachel.
I don't know if Michael Smith's on there, I believe it's in design, I've seen some invoices come through, some.
Michael, you still on?
Yeah, there's a RFP out for Construction Manager at Risk for the construction and it's due back in 11 days. You know, I'm, the 1.5 million or 1.4 million, from what we're hearing from everybody, that's maybe going to be a little bit on the light side, but we'll know where we stand in about two weeks.
And then, Michael, the mayor minute, I've heard we were talking about the SWAT building. There's a possibility that we might want to add that in the same area as the maintenance building in Brook Run. Is that able to be put together? I mean, there's 700,000 for the maintenance building. I don't know where we are on contracting, but if it made sense to put the buildings and the development of that together, is that easily done or is that a hard ask?
Well, we would, we'd have to pull the, I mean, I don't think we could do it as part of the RFP that we're currently doing. So we, we'd have to redo that, I guess, to be able to, we'd have to take a step backwards, I guess, to try to put all that together. I think, you know, we, we've looked at where it would go if you did that. And it would have to go between, because we're reusing the existing site for our new building and basically the same footprint of the site. So the police facility would either have to go up on the hill between our facility and the, and Peeler Road or off the end of our building and have a separate drive up to Peeler Road. So you, you'd have to clear out an area on one side of our building or the other to add that other facility.
I thought that the footprint was going to be smaller, this was going to be a smaller than the current footprint that's there now, the maintenance facility. Wasn't this going to be a much smaller, simpler place?
The, the building is going to be smaller, but we, the, the issue's always been we have too much building not really laid out the way we need it and we don't have enough yard space. So the building. So the building will be smaller, but the yard will be bigger. And it's, it's, it's basically going to occupy the same space we have now.
Right, and that's, and that's, Michael's a hundred percent on that, which is, you know, before that was a facility that was designed to, um, to manage the former facility that was there. So we're modifying it to a, to a newer need, well, what he needs is more yard space. And it will have, you know, some office space in it as well for currently the Triscapes people.
So, but are we still going to look into putting that SWAT storage building there on that site?
It'll be near that site. You know, I don't know if we can put it exactly, we, we got to look at that, that's something, that's some new information that we clarified this morning. So let's go ahead and lay that out, the chief has good direction there and we'll see where, where it will fit. We don't want to, um, you know, do anything that's detrimental to the yard space that's needed. So I see it being adjacent to that.
Anybody else? Did we give you enough, whatever y'all need it?
Yes, so, uh, I think the operating side sounded pretty good. I, I'll go back, I've got somebody taking notes with me here. I think there will make some capital adjustments, a couple here, uh, I'll get with Michael Smith when he's back in the office. And, uh, again, just a reminder, public hearing on the fifteenth and the twenty-eighth, those will be our next meetings to go over it. If you have any questions between now and then, as always, please send them our way.
And on the twenty-third of September, Michael's going to do a presentation on the North Peachtree Corridor Plan and I think a discussion of where we go from here. Uh, because it plays into the budget, but that gives us plenty of time because it's a few weeks before the first budget hearing. So, okay, thank you.
Sure, I do.
I need a motion to.
Mayor, one thing, yes, I want to just make one state, the, um, we do have one of our new ambassador vehicles outside. So on your way out, let's please take a look at that, the chief will show it to you.
Cool. One quick question, so the meeting that was tentatively scheduled in the future, what was the seventeenth, we don't need that?
I don't think so.
I just want to clear my calendar and make sure I understand. Thank you.
Move to adjourn. Right?
Yeah, I think so.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, any opposed? No, thank you.